Good afternoon, Nikariki. We will be calling the board meeting to order in a moment. Could we please hold comments while SPS TV takes us live? After a five-second pause, I will call us to order. This is Director Hampson. I am now calling the December 16th, 2020 regular board meeting to order at 3:30 PM. We would like to acknowledge that we are on the ancestral lands and traditional territories of the Puget Sound Coast Salish people. Ms. Wilson Jones, the roll call, please. Director DeWolff.
President.
Director Harris.
Present.
Director Hershey.
Yeah.
Director Mack.
Here.
Director Rankin.
Here.
Director Rivera Smith.
Present.
And Director Hampson.
Here.
Superintendent Juno is also joining us for today's meeting, and additional staff will be briefing the board as we move through the agenda. This meeting is being held remotely per the Governor's proclamation prohibiting meetings such as this one from being held in person. Public is being provided remote access today by phone and through SPS TV by broadcast and streaming on YouTube. To facilitate this meeting, I will ask all participants to ensure you are muted when you are not speaking. Staff may be muting participants to address feedback and ensure we can hear directors and staff. I will now turn it over to Superintendent Juno for her comments.
Thank you so much. I guess people are still listening to Governor Inslee.
If everyone who's listening to Governor Inslee could mute their phones, that would be helpful.
So I just want to give, I'll be brief today, just about staff changes. As you know, I appointed two new cabinet-level leaders last week, and I just want to take a couple minutes to thank Dr. Debacker for her service to Seattle Public Schools and to just give a really quick introduction of our new central administration leaders. And just want to thank Dr. Debacker for saying yes, two years ago, to join Seattle Public Schools as the Chief Academic Officer. Done a lot of great work. She's ushered in new science curriculum, a lot of professional development, a shift to remote learning, summer schools, just a lot of work has happened under her leadership. And I just want to take a moment and thank her for everything that she's provided for Seattle Public Schools, families, school communities, students, our educators. You know, I want to thank her for her tenacity, her smarts, her humor, and her grace during one of the most challenging moments in the history of public education. Her leadership will be missed, but like me, she knows that she's leaving her division in very good hands. And with that, I just want to say thanks to Keisha Scarlett for saying yes, for taking the helm as the new Chief Academic Officer. As you know, she's currently the Chief of Equity Partnerships and Engagement. Keisha's a multi-generational resident of Seattle and a graduate of Seattle Public Schools. She has vast educational experiences, ranging from an early career in STEM at Boeing to working as a STEM teacher at Mercer Middle School. She was the principal of South Shore Pre-K 8, Human Resource Director, and in her current position as Chief Equity Partnerships and Engagement Division, has really pushed a central administration to really, and throughout the district, really to really keep racial equity at the forefront and to build partnerships across the city. She's dedicated her career to advocating for and creating academic opportunities and environments that tap into the inherent brilliance of students, particularly those furthest from educational justice. She's on a mission to normalize Black excellence and to eliminate opportunity gaps. And she pushes our system to do better and be better for young people. And to fill Dr. Scarlett's former position, as you heard that I've appointed James Bush to lead the Equity Partnerships and Engagement Division for the past four years. He has served as the Executive Director of School and Community Partnerships, and under his leadership, we have secured $130 million in city's family education preschool and promise grants that support 30 schools through 2026, opened 18 emergency childcare sites in spring 2020, and 47 childcare centers this school year that serve 2,000 students daily. He's helped build institutional alignment between Seattle Public Schools and low-income housing partners. He's developed a variety of data resources to support partner organizations in tracking, monitoring, and supporting our students. Prior to joining Seattle Public Schools, he served as the Neighborhood Programs Manager at the Seattle Department of Neighborhoods, where he managed a variety of community-building programs, and has served as a key leader in the City of Seattle Race and Social Justice Initiative for three of Seattle's mayors. And I just want to point out that it's really a testament to the overall strength and excellence of our staff that we currently have, that we can fill these positions with such high-caliber individuals. We're very fortunate that Dr. Debacker has been here the past couple of years, and that Dr. Scarlett and James have accepted their new roles and will continue to lead our district during these challenging times. So please join me in welcoming and thanking Dr. Debacker and welcoming Dr. Keisha Scarlett and Mr. James Bush to senior leadership.
Okay, we've now reached the consent portion of today's agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move, sorry, I'm still getting my notes pulled up here. One second. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
The approval of the consent agenda has been moved by Director Hershey and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. Do directors have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The consent agenda has passed unanimously. Let's see, we have now reached the public testimony portion of the agenda, and it is not yet 3:45 PM. I would ask if any committee chairs would like to give their board committee reports now in lieu of taking a recess to keep the meeting going. We will then begin testimony at 3:45 PM and come back to committee reports as needed. I will go first to Operations Chair, Director Mack.
Yes, good evening. Wasn't quite prepared to go first, but I will go ahead and do my best to be succinct and not ramble on too long. We had our last meeting on December 3rd, where we covered quite a few things. I believe some of those things are on introduction tonight. Our next meeting is on the 14th. For our regular Operations Committee meeting, but we have now scheduled, and I think you're all aware of, a Operations Committee meeting of the whole, and I believe that is on the 3rd. I'm sorry if I'm giving the date incorrectly. No, it cannot be the 3rd January. Within that first week, though, and please refer to the calendar for that meeting, that committee of the whole is going to be focused on the Student Assignment Transition Plan for next year and the boundaries around Mercer Middle School, so that we can move those items forward before open enrollment happens and get those decisions made. So the timeline is a little tight. My understanding is that staff has been hosting numerous community meetings around these proposals, and that committee meeting of the whole, we as a full board will discuss the proposal, and then it'll be introduced at the next January board meeting, two weeks later. So there'll still be time for conversation and process once that happens. One of the items that came in front of us at the last meeting was the Traffic Safety Committee. And that committee, which is actually a committee that is a City of Seattle-sponsored committee, and we have staff and community members that sit on that, but it is not one of our advisory committees. They have done an amazing job of creating a document around school site planning guidance for traffic safety to support the planning process of buildings early on, to ensure that those projects are considering traffic safety as they're developing. It was really great to see that presentation, and the full actual document is in the packet if you want to take a look at it. And the next meeting is not, the agenda's not finalized, but it will be in early January, and we'll see you at the community meeting of the whole in early January. Thank you.
Okay, I'll go next to Director, I'm sorry, Director Rankin. For student support.
Yeah, thanks. We had our December meeting on the 8th of this month, and some of which we discussed are on the agenda for today, some new course additions that are really exciting, and it was great to hear from the content area managers about those things. Exciting stuff about Black Studies and Black Education as well, and course additions in alignment with our recent resolution in support of LGBTQIA+ students. So, good stuff. We also, in committee, let's see, this past spring, when we began talking about the Students' Rights and Responsibilities Handbook for this year, it's an annual item, there were some questions and concerns from board directors around aligning, making sure that the handbook and student guidance aligned with some of our upcoming initiatives around supporting Black students and some of our values around discipline and such. And we asked at that time that the Student Rights and Responsibilities Annual Item come to the board sooner in the year than it has. And so, thank you to staff for responding to that request, and we got kind of an introduction to the work that's going on for next year's at this month's committee meeting, which is great. And so I'll just encourage my board colleagues to, if you have any questions or comments or things you're wondering about, that Erin Ramonik and staff are ready and willing to chat with you or receive questions as that work moves forward. We also had a very, very helpful update from the Digital Learning Department that I just wanted to, again, say thank you for that. And if folks are interested, you can, let's see, that memo would be in the meeting materials, which you can request from the board office, and I'll try to post some of the information as well. It was a really nice overview of some work and questions that have come in. I think someone else is unmuted. Questions about the digital space and tools and concerns that have come in kind of bits and pieces, we were able to get that update all at once in one place and one memo. So big thank you to that, for that. And that, that is, I think, the update from committee. And we'll have more, we'll have more coming in this meeting.
Thank you very much to both chairs. We will next go to public testimony, as it is 3:45. We will be taking public testimony by teleconference today, as stated on the agenda. For any speakers watching through SPS TV, please call in now to ensure you are on the phone line when your name is called. Board Procedure 1430 BP provides the rules for testimony, and I ask that speakers are respectful of these rules. I will summarize some important parts of this procedure. First, testimony will be taken today from those individuals called from our public testimony list, and if applicable, the waiting list, which are included on today's agenda posting on the school board website. Only those who are called by name should unmute their phones, and only one person should speak at a time. Speakers from the list may cede their time to another person when the listed speaker's name is called. The total amount of time allowed will not exceed two minutes for the combined number of speakers, and time will not be restarted after the new speaker begins. In order to maximize opportunities for others to address the board, each speaker is allowed only one speaking slot per meeting. If a speaker cedes time to a later speaker on the testimony list or waiting list, the person to whom time was ceded will not be called to provide testimony again later in the meeting, as there is only one speaking slot per person. Those who do not wish to have time ceded to them may decline and retain their place on the testimony or waitlist. Finally, the majority of the speaker's time should be spent on the topic they have indicated they wish to speak about. Ms. Wilson Jones will read off the testimony speakers.
Thank you, President Hampson. Quick logistical note, speakers, please remain muted until your name is called to provide testimony. When your name is called, please be sure you have unmuted on the device you are calling from, and also press *6 to unmute yourself on the conference call line. Each speaker has a two-minute speaking time and a chime will sound when your time is exhausted, and then the next speaker will be called. First on today's testimony list is Leilani Norman. Leilani, if you're on, you can go ahead.
Okay. Can you go ahead?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hello, my name is Yellow Buffalo Stone Woman. My English name is Leilani Norman. I would like to talk about the good expectations that I feel like the Seattle School District needs in a superintendent. I feel like us native students deserve to be heard and need to be able to be understood. We are tired of asking for respect due to the recent superintendent. We need someone who knows how to connect with our community, is able to show that they care, and is able to help our communities with funding. We are sick and tired of trying to ask for respect when we're just being ignored. In our next leader, we deserve to be able to connect with our superintendent and to be able to help one another and to be able to make my and the other students around me. We deserve to be heard, and we deserve to be able to help make that change as well, not to be blocked off from our dreams and expectations that we want for the rest of our future, as well as our programs. At Clear Sky, I feel like they need to help fund Clear Sky and help connect with Clear Sky as well. We need more recognition from the next superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson Jones, please call the next speaker.
Next is Kayla Harstad. Kayla Harstad.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead, Kayla.
My name is Kayla Harstad. I am Tirtamauan Chipewaunisina Buensu. I'm a junior at Ingram, and I'm here to offer Indigenous student perspective on what style of leadership and qualities I would want to lead our public education institution. Seattle Public Schools has a unique opportunity to start a new chapter with the future superintendent. Leadership qualities that would be most supportive of reaching marginalized students include a leader willing to interact in the community, a leader willing to join our Native community in feasts, gatherings, community events, a leader with roots and connections with culture and community. I would like a leader that is open, honest, transparent, willing to grow and learn from students, and is compassionate and fair. A leader willing to admit when they make mistakes and own up to their failures while striving to do better and not have a hidden agenda, political ambitions, or fall pre-senses. Some priorities I hope the new superintendent will focus on is enhancing Indian education accountability to parents, students, and community, lead Indian ed by example through active engagement with Indigenous students and families, increase resources in order to provide support like they're supposed to, seek out more perspectives from Black and Indigenous families to guide decision-making, working closely with BIPOC to develop creative ways to address the achievement gap, a student leadership council selected by students and community and not district staff. I hope to see more schools focusing on teaching about Indigenous resilience, contributions, success, and triumphs. And just to conclude, I am looking forward to the future, that we feel hopeful that our elected public servants, Seattle Public Schools Board of Directors, will start a new chapter titled "The New Beginnings." Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, please call the next speaker.
Next is Sharice Gaffney. Sharice Gaffney.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sharice Gaffney. I have a 13-year-old at Whitman and a 15-year-old at Ingram. I'm here to ask the board to make a plan for all grades to return to in-person school this school year as soon as it is safe to do so. We are in the middle of a mental health crisis for children and teens that is exacerbated by the trauma and isolation of online school. We know that students need school resources, in-person teacher interaction, and peer-based learning. And the idea that's being advanced by some, that it is more equitable to just keep kids home, defies logic and is not credible. You, the board, have the authority and the responsibility to act with the urgency that this student mental health crisis demands. An outdoor pilot project for a handful of classes is a distraction from bargaining on real solutions. Kindergarten and first grade is not enough. We need a plan to get every grade back to in-person school this year for those families who choose it. SPS should make a plan now, negotiate with its partners now, and get buildings ready now, so that schools are ready to open when public health numbers are met. Telling families that it's too hard to shuffle schedules, to rehire bus drivers, fix HVAC, telling us that it isn't worth doing for the last few months of school, or that continued isolation is somehow better than disrupting schedules, all of that fails to recognize how traumatic this situation is for the vast majority of your students. I urge the board to identify return-to-school goals and negotiate with your university partners, and invest in safety measures for teachers and students now, so schools are ready to open as soon as possible. Please act with the urgency that this situation demands of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. Will you please call the next speaker?
Next is Emily Chirkin. Emily Chirkin.
Good afternoon. My name is Emily Chirkin. I'm a parent educator and screen time expert. Four young people under 18 died by suicide in October. Moments ago, pediatrician Dr. Danielle Zer shared that 50% of kids 11 to 17 have thought about self-harm or suicide in the past two weeks. King County has released a health advisory stating that suicide rates throughout our population may rise as the COVID-19 pandemic continues. SPS families need to know there is a district plan to return to the classroom sooner rather than later if families choose. I have heard the argument that if we send kids to school, they and our teachers will die of COVID. However, it is a false choice that in order to keep teachers and students safe, we must embrace 100% remote learning. Of course, we must protect teachers. Other districts have shown that there are safe ways to return to the classroom. I am an educator, and I am also a concerned parent. Anti-science fear-mongering doesn't help children or teachers. Both deserve to be safe, from COVID, from isolation, and from mental health crises. The district must address this. The recommendations read by Inslee and Reichel just an hour ago have opened the door to move forward now. Tonight, please provide a clear, date-based timeline before approving this bar. I continue to struggle to understand why this district is willing to ask so much of families and teachers, yet seems unwilling to do the meaningful, uncomfortable work of thinking outside of the box to better serve all families in this city during this crisis. Nine months into this pandemic, I remain astonished by the disconnect between your claim to value equity above all else, while you continue to make decisions that negatively impact those furthest from educational justice. As I said in my testimony in September, as a result of this continued failure to sink outside of the box and do difficult work, you are further exacerbating the very inequity you claim to prioritize, and that is inexcusable. It is vitally important to have a clear plan for a return to hybrid or in-person learning as soon as possible for all students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. Will you please call the next speaker?
Next is Alexandra Olins. Alexandra Olins.
Hi, can you, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, Alexandra.
Thank you. I'm the mother of a middle schooler in Seattle Schools. Last week, we started a Facebook group for Seattle parents and teachers to talk about reopening SPS for all kids this year as public health metrics allow in the hybrid model. It's a private group, but we have close to 1,000 members already. I am very concerned about the lack of a plan to get all kids back to school this year. Keeping the vast majority of SPS kids in remote learning for 18 months is not okay. I am deeply worried about remote learning because the quality of education is inferior. I am deeply worried about remote learning because it's making our kids sedentary and contributing to depression and isolation. But mainly, I am worried about remote learning because I was a teacher, a public school teacher in New Orleans and Los Angeles, and I care deeply about equity, and I know that remote learning exacerbates the educational gap between low-income kids and more affluent kids every single day. We don't see the kids who are disengaged and falling behind. Teachers are working hard, but this is beyond their control. We don't see the dropout. We don't see the kids who are being abused because they aren't in school. I have heard from directors that between 20 and 30% of middle school kids, middle and high school kids, are not logging on at all. They are completely disengaged. Their futures are on the line, and that is not okay. If we care about equity, we will figure this out. SPS will vote on a plan to bring pre-K through first grade back starting in April. That is not sufficient. And SEA opposes that plan. I am a strong supporter of unions, but SEA seems much more interested in saying no than getting kids back to school, and that is not okay. 1,000 members of our Facebook group want to help. We are emailing the ledge and asking them to approve an emergency supplemental budget to fund reopening. Please don't say it's not worth it to implement the hybrid model for a few months. It is. My sister is an administrator in Baltimore, where every school has to have a plan to pivot to the hybrid model in two weeks when public health numbers allow. They have 25 schools open now for the most-at-risk kids. They have a union, they have old buildings, why can't Seattle do that? We have to figure this out.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. Please call the next speaker.
Next is Chris Jackins. Chris Jackins.
Hello?
We can hear you.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124. My compliments to the speakers today. On the reopening plan, four points. Number one, the district's remote learning software sharing student images and data in ways that appear to violate federal law, FERPA. The district should cease these apparently illegal actions. Number two, the two-and-a-half-month timeline should be shorter with partial rollout sooner when coronavirus levels allow it. Number three, the proposal needs coordination with the outdoor education proposal. Number four, the resolution includes waivers of board policy made in August. These waivers need review, not These waivers need review, not an automatic rollover. On final acceptance of the Queen Anne Elementary School project, three points. Number one, board members often celebrate final acceptance of such projects. Number two, at Queen Anne, the district forgot to include a sewer connection. To fix this omission, the district removed a large tree from the city landmarked Boulevard. Is the board celebrating this part of the project, too? Number three, at Kimball, the district wants to remove 40% of the significant trees. At Northgate, the district wants to shrink the playground by half. The board should change these plans, not celebrate them. On personnel changes, two points. Number one, Chief Academic Officer Diane Debacker is leaving the district. I wish to thank Mr. Debacker for her good work for the district. Number two, Superintendent Denise Juno announced that she would leave the district in June. I wish to thank Superintendent Juno for her good work for the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. Will you please call the next speaker?
Next is Skylar Pond. Skylar Pond. Skylar Pond. You may need to press star six to unmute your phone on the conference line. Moving to the next speaker on today's list, Sabrina Burr. Sabrina Burr.
First of all, I also would like to thank Diane Debacker and Denise Juno for their service, even though Denise will be with us. But I do want to say that I am in favor of approving Resolution 2020 slash 21 dash four dash one in its entirety. I just got off the phone and did the governor's press conference and asked for some very particular things for Seattle Public Schools, especially for some more funding. But one of the other things that I talked about is a meeting I had today at Lafayette where two African-American young men were not getting the same treatment as their first cousins who have more of their Turkish look. We came to positive resolve, but we have to make sure that we take care of the social and emotional needs of our kids now. Some are wanting to go back to school. For some kids, they're thriving. But what is missing is family engagement, how we work with our families, especially those furthest from educational justice and those who who just need our services. And what I realized is these teachers did not have the skill around family engagement, and so it created trauma to families. We've had an educator commit suicide. We've had a student commit suicide, and I know several parents have. And so we really have to put our kids first. Like I just told the governor, the most valuable resource that we have in Washington State is our kids, and I need Seattle Public Schools to put that to action because we are about people and position, and we're not about kids in classrooms. And we need to make it about teachers, students, and parents as the partner with the students. It's very, very important. So let's make sure we get this right and put our students first. Thank you.
Thank you. Please call the next speaker, Ms. Wilson Jones.
Next is Sarah Sense Wilson. Sarah Sense Wilson.
I want to take a moment to wish Denise Juno the best with her future endeavors. We are at a pivotal point in time, a crossroads with our public education system. New beginnings is possible if you all are willing to have a shared vision with our Seattle community. Members of our community want to usher in new leadership with the following recommendations and with consideration to both budget shortfalls and our COVID pandemic. Number one, overhaul the strategic plan. Number two, start planning healing gatherings and restorative justice sessions with students, parents, and community. Number three, negotiate an MOA with our multicultural community accountability coalition. Number four, external audits of Title I and Title VI. Five, overhaul the special education department. We need administration dedicated to providing services to IEP 504 students. It is well documented that the SPED department operates and functions to reject, postpone, and defend administrators and with no effective mechanism for holding staff accountable. Number six, eliminate the position of superintendent advisor. Number seven, eliminate the position of board liaison. Dedicate those funds towards compensation to youth, parents, and community members who donate their expertise towards Seattle Public School Committee participation. Number eight, cap the superintendent's salary at $150,000 and eliminate the superintendent bonuses. Number nine, community participation in decision-making for new superintendent hire, do not waste public dollars to contract with a talent search. And finally, thank you to the board members whom chose to stand on the right side of history this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please call the next speaker, Ms. Wilson Jones?
Next is Giselle Jenkins. Giselle Jenkins. Giselle Jenkins. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, I'm Giselle Assalmore from Ingram High School and descended from the Alia tribe. We see progress in SPS having that Denise Juno is resigning from her position. Now that we have an opportunity with our new superintendent, these are the policies we need enforced to make SPS better for students and teachers. We ask that the new, upcoming new superintendent assures consent largely being taught in flash standing for family life and sexual health and enforces policies around sexual harassment that occurs in SPS schools. We need teachers to be trained in protocol and take the matter seriously. Schools need to raise awareness about sexual harassment and abuse so that students can identify it and prevent these acts occurring against others. More than half of Native American women have been sexually assaulted, including over a third who have been raped during their lifetime. Our rate of rape for Native woman is nearly 2.5 times higher than for a white woman, according to the National Institute of Justice Study. This reflects a devaluation of Native women and girls in our society and thus our schools. As a student in SPS, no topic, including anything about sexual violence and how it is not accepted in any way, shape, or form by staff nor students, was in flash. Not a single thing was brought up about the forms of sexual harassment and assault and why consent for any sort of body-to-body contact is enforced. Flash needs to be updated and match more relevant subjects. The topic of sexual harassment and standing against it is needed in curriculum. We encourage having student voices put in topics discussed in flash. We need to better foster societal and school culture where sexual harassment and violence is not accepted. It needs to be beyond class agreement but carried out in action, too. Teachers and students can be leaders in ending sexual violence by voicing that this behavior is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. Please call the next speaker.
Next is Gia Tran. Gia Tran.
Hi, my name is Gia Tran. I will be reading the testimony written by Hunter Sherbeck, part of the Standing Rock Tribe and a high school senior. This is it. Today, I am suggesting recommendations for Native education during COVID-19. These suggestions are based on research and in consultation with professionals and the Native community. According to the Society for Research in Child Development, SRCD, Native students experience an increased degree of vulnerability due to negative consequences of COVID resulting in further distancing our Native students from educational equity. Interestingly enough, while research and common sense point to establishing a strategy for sharing resources for the most vulnerable, we see in Seattle a multitude of barriers for Native students. The apparent lack of a comprehensive strategy to bridge district, community, and student needs has been exposed by the prolonged and protracted neglect of our district leadership under the watchful eye of all elected officials. According to SRCD, ongoing inequitable conditions may be experienced as interlocking systems of oppression, increasing the chance of poor educational outcomes for Native students. Furthermore, it is noted that evidence supports what Native people have always known. Connections with Native culture and community protect and buffer children from the trauma of inequity. We suggest SPS establish a plan to engage Native community and Native-led SBOs to develop a multifaceted strategy to reach self-identified Native students enrolled in SPS for bridging resources, support, and connection to best mitigate the impact of COVID-19 for students and families. SPS may start by acknowledging the harm that has been committed against our community by way of ongoing failures to address issues raised and ignored by students and families.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any additional speakers, Ms. Wilson Jones?
Yes. Next is Erin Acuno. Erin Acuno. Erin, are you on the line?
Yes. Many of, thank you, many of us are concerned with the upcoming leadership change. Under Superintendent Juno's leadership, there has been more focus on students furthest from educational justice, including the start of the African-American male achievement department. Many of these efforts need time to find their footing and will require executive leadership to see them through to their highest possibility. Many of us are also wondering what the board's plans are to transition in executive leadership. During the last superintendent search, board members made it very clear that the community was only allowed to participate in the process in very defined ways. Family and student voice was not centered in that process, and we hope that will change in this upcoming search. The loudest invoices, including from organizations, served as proxies at times, which is not good community engagement, nor should that be a substitute. We hope that you will release your timeline and the general process for the selection very soon so that we can work with you to find good ways to engage. During the last few years, Superintendent Juno has done a lot more community engagement, and we appreciate this. Thank you. Having to constantly restart and rebuild these relationships erodes the confidence and trust in the institution itself, so we hope that we can also see the cycles of churn through people stop and that we can also work to center students, educators, and families because they deserve stable leadership and a balanced working relationship with all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. Please call the next speaker.
Next is B Balkan Foster. B Balkan Foster.
Hi. Which translated means sun-haired woman. I was given this name by Oscar Eagle during Sundance at Sitting Bull Place. My name is a captain, what I strive to live up to. My English name is Boo Balkan Foster. I'm Apache and adopted macaw. This is my 26 years as an educator in Seattle Public Schools and only the second time I've signed up for public testimony. I've watched over the last few weeks and months have been filled with a range of thoughts and emotions, everything from disgust to anger. It is sad the greatest warriors never shared their good deeds or accomplishments because another would speak for them. Tonight, I would like to speak on behalf of Superintendent Juno, not because she needs my support, because she certainly does not, as she is capable in her own right, but because I believe it is my responsibility. I know what it is like to have the truth twisted, be talked about, and unsupported, all wibbly-creepy, a great loss. I also know what it's like to be an honorable woman in spite of it all. I see this in Superintendent Juno. As you can imagine, in my 26 years in Seattle Schools, I've seen many things. Under Superintendent Juno's direction, I've seen more women, specifically women of color, placed in leadership positions, bringing a perspective that has never been before. I watched the youth advisory board develop and their recommendations implemented, increasing engagement for our students. And I have been bullied as an educator as she expanded the success of Chakachis and opened a second classroom, thereby creating a space for our Indigenous students, the first people of this land, to have a place of belonging and academic success. It is through Superintendent Juno's ongoing support that addressing students furthest from educational justice moved from a phrase to a reality. I know this because I am humbled to be part of this process, stay in my classroom, and time with students. Superintendent Juno, as a lifelong educator, as a parent, and perhaps most importantly, as a Native woman, I thank you for your leadership. Thank you for being an example of an honorable warrior for my own two young daughters and countless others. It is my privilege to speak highly of you because I know of what I speak. You are a warrior. I thank you, and I raise my hand to you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. Please call the next speaker.
Next is Brooke Stromy. Brooke Stromy.
The COVID-19 pandemic continues to negatively impact our Native community. UNEA conducted a survey with the goal of finding out what families are most in need of. I will report our findings with the hope that you'll join us in the effort to meet these needs. When asked what have been the most helpful services UNEA has provided, these were the most common responses: consistent assistance with groceries and supplies, tutoring, school supplies, tech equipment such as printers, laptops, and headphones, offering gift cards for students to earn through activities and trainings, and winter coats. When asked what services they have received from SPS or Tucida, half reported not receiving any. For the other half, these were the most common responses: some support with groceries, textbook deliveries, tutoring, some family supports. When asked how SPS can better support their youth, these were some of the responses: letting families know about UNEA and other organizations that provide essential supports. One parent included this question: Why didn't my family know about UNEA before? Acknowledging and acting on the unique needs of multicultural families, advocating for special education services, and connecting students with IEPs and 504 plans with greater academic supports, providing an apology for what the district has put their children through. When asked what their top priorities or most pressing needs are at this time, this is what we found: the most common priority named was consistent grocery support, and the others most commonly named were tutoring, help with transportation, cheaper Wi-Fi, technology, traditional medicine, life skills trainings, and programs like Clear Sky. This is just a snapshot of the basic needs that are not being met. We suggest Indian Ed seek creative ways to meet these needs. In addition, improve and increase lines of communication between families and connect them with UNEA and other organizations providing COVID relief. In addition, accept valuable resources offered by organizations like UNEA. Recently, UNEA offered Tucida winter coats to share with Native SPS families and received no response. Why is that? We also challenge the district to delve into what Indian Ed is and is not doing. Why have some families not received any resources or services from Tucida? What funding are they dedicating to providing support in COVID-19 relief toward those high-risk Native students and their families? Ultimately, we are working and living in the same community and share common goals: to uplift our youth, ensure their needs are met, and do everything possible to work in success. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Wilson Jones, next speaker, please.
Next is Manuela Sly. Manuela Sly. Manuela. You may need to press star six to unmute on the conference line. Moving to the next speaker.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can hear you.
I'm here. Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Manuela.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Manuela Sly, President of Seattle Council PTSD. I'm here today to state some of our council's recommendations recently made to Seattle Public Schools' leadership on behalf of students, parents, and teachers. In regards of in-person return to school, number one, hire a COVID-19 SAR or expert to guide reopening decisions to serve as a liaison between the district and the Health Department and to act as a mediator with the labor unions. Number two, urgent plan and vision for support for special education students, English learners, and other students furthest from educational justice. In regards of student safety and abuse in our school system, number one, HR and personnel accountability measures that include topics such as the speed of investigations. Number two, development of clear and streamlined ways to report incidents of abuse, racism, bias, et cetera, efforts to implement restorative justice practices. Number three, plan, process, and procedures being implemented to address retaliation such as investigations being done by a third outside party. Number four, a review of investigation and discipline policies and practices should be completed, possibly in coordination with OSPI, determine the level of offense of determine the level of offense for which no hire is possible, and ensure it is legally reenforceable and part of any termination agreement, including resignation. Finally, deeper due diligence on the future appointment of principals and greater engagement to include community, staff, and faculty. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones.
Next is Joseph Hardy. Joseph Hardy.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Joseph Hardy, I am the head boys basketball coach at Ingram High School. I'm here to request that Seattle Public Schools make it possible for permits to be obtained for education-based athletic workouts to continue outdoors. The state's guidelines allow education-based athletics to have workouts outside with restrictions until January 23rd. Our, our program has workouts that, that take place three days a week, and we get anywhere from 12 to 25 kids that show up in this December weather each day. The outdoor area at our school has only two hoops with no roof and no lights. We can't start our workouts until 4:00 PM, so that leaves us about 30 to 40 minutes of daylight on a sunny day, and if it's raining, we must cancel them. Our athletic director has been trying daily to get us set up with a better outdoor situation. But obtaining a permit for us to use at another Seattle Public School hasn't been easy. We aren't asking to go indoors, we understand and respect every safety protocol currently with the pandemic. What we are asking to do, though, is to be able to relocate to another Seattle Public School, for example, Hazel Wolf or Bryant Elementary, that has a roof over their outdoor basketball hoops, and also has lights, so we continue to provide our student athletes a safe outlet to be around their teammates and peers. We've been denied the chance to go elsewhere continuously. By allowing access to another school's outdoor facilities, this will keep the morale of our kids extremely high, keep them physically and mentally active. The permits have been extremely hard to come by for what seems like a very easy approval. We are currently, we're asking the same thing, we're asking to do the same thing we are currently doing, being outside in pods with masks on, just to be able to do that at another SBS school, outside with a roof and lights. The kids see all these other states completing their fall sports and beginning their winter sports, and we're at a time when it's very important to keep our kids positive mentally. It's important that we do all we can safely to make sure we are providing the best and safest experience for our student athletes. When it comes to our workouts, it's easy to see how excited they are, but most importantly, I speak with the teachers, and it's proven that their grades of participation in online classes have improved dramatically, and they've been able to consistently come to workouts. Please reconsider and issue permits for education-based athletics. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones.
Next is Jaciza Lawrence Smalls. Jaciza Lawrence Smalls. Jaciza Lawrence Smalls, you may need to press star six to unmute. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Hello, this is, this is Jaciza Lawrence Smalls. I just would like for Seattle Public Schools to start taking accountability when it comes to racism and racial bias, when it comes to especially African-American boys of color. My youngest son was put in a dark, quiet room at the age of three. The Seattle Public Schools first do not take accountability of that. They are not keeping information when parents are giving vital information to them regarding their child. They are also not giving information to especially parents of color when it comes to needs and things that they can do when it comes to assisting children with, especially my son's non, one of my kids is nonverbal, so I would like for them to take accountability of that, and just because a child has a disability, that doesn't mean that you count them out.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones.
Next is Christine Tang. Christine Tang. Christine, if you're on the line, you may need to press star six to unmute. Christine Tang. Moving to our next speaker, Catherine Seguin or Seguin. Catherine Seguin. I see somebody is unmuted, is that Christine or Catherine? Moving to the next speaker on the list, Janice White. Janice White. Go ahead, Janice, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you, yes? Thank you. I am president of the Special Education PTSA, which supports the work of Seattle Council PTSA on the anti-racism policy, and supports the change needed to make sure that all of our children are safe when they go to school. As a white mother with privilege who also has a child with autism, I am also here because these practices that after the fact the district calls egregious and unacceptable have been happening for years to children with disabilities. In second grade, when my son had a meltdown, the assistant principal came and videotaped it on her personal cellphone so she would have evidence of his out-of-control behavior. That same year, an SBS security guard removed him from a place he went to calm down when he was dysregulated, causing a massive meltdown which led to him being placed in an isolation room. The next year, when he had an issue with his teacher, that teacher picked him up, carried him out to the hall, and threw him against the wall. In fourth grade, I was called to school one day to find my son on the floor with the principal standing over him and about to put him into a prohibited hold until I yelled down the hall, "Get your hands off my child." What happened after all of these incidents? My child started running away from school. One day, the school called the police on him, and he refused to go to school at all. We were able to sue, and as a result, transfer him to one of the schools in the district that has a positive, inclusive culture and is accepting of children like him. Today, he is a straight A student in high school who has not had a single behavioral incident in over three years. I will continue to come before you and advocate on this issue because the experiences of Jaleel and of other BIPOC children who suffer even more because of the intersection of race and disability need to be heard, and they deserve to learn in an environment where they can be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. Could you see if there's anybody we missed before we go to the waitlist?
I'm checking back for Skylar Pond. Skylar Pond. Skylar, on the line, you may need to press star six to unmute. Okay, then moving to Christine Tang again, is Christine on the line? Catherine Seguin or Seguin?
Yes, this is Catherine Seguin, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Catherine, yes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Catherine Seguin, I have four children in Seattle Public Schools, two are in high school and two are in middle school. I would like to speak about the recently released PULSE survey. First, I believe it is totally unacceptable to take the pulse of the SBS community in October and deliver those results to us in December. We are in a crisis, our children are crisis learning, and our teachers are crisis teaching. Your review of the survey states, quote, "The COVID-19 pandemic has made it more important than ever to check in regularly with students, families, and educators." Please, Seattle Public Schools, take our pulse again and deliver the results in a manner that reflects the crisis that we are in. I have teenagers, and I can guarantee you that their experience in December is significantly worse than their experience in October. I call it the slow fade. They are sleeping more, contacting friends less, missing more assignments, turning off their cameras more, and exercising less. They are disengaging and feeling less hopeful about their academics and their social environment. You are not serving any of the students in Seattle Public Schools regardless of skin color by dragging your feet on reopening schools. You are serving yourselves, the teachers' union, and the more popular narrative in Seattle, which is that Seattle, that schools cannot be reopened safely. Finally, I would like to request that you apply more effort to get all children back to school for second semester. There are models where this is working in Washington State. The mental health impact on the older students is disproportional. Please act with urgency, do not wave the white flag on this school year for secondary students. With the vaccine rollout and spring weather around the corner, Seattle Schools is about to look very silly with so many students languishing in remote learning. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones.
Next is Meredith McCray. Meredith McCray. Meredith McCray. You may need to press star six.
Hi, this is Mer-
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Hi there. I am a Seattle mother of a five-year-old, three-year-old, and eight-month-old, and my daughter, and a daughter of lifelong Washington State teacher and union member. I'm testifying today because I feel our kids have been completely forgotten by state and local leadership. My daughter started kindergarten this September and yet has set, has yet to set foot in her classroom or has met her teacher or classmates in person. She is bright, eager to learn, and friendly. At the start of the year, she was thrilled to get to her school supplies, ecstatic at the opportunity for any social interaction after six months in quarantine. As the weeks went on, however, her enthusiasm waned, and my heart broke as she became increasingly checked out, watching many of the videos intended to teach her to read and write. While she painstakingly worked through a 10-minute-long prerecorded video, she burst into tears saying, "I'll never learn to write." Teaching a child to read and write through a screen is not only completely in contrast to how the brain naturally processes information, but borderline uncruel when these kids begin internalizing their own failure to learn in this way that is not set up to be successful from the start. My daughter is a neurotypical child. My friends with kids with learning challenges are beyond distraught at how difficult remote school is for them. The goals of kindergarten are to teach kids social skills and the building blocks of reading and writing, and now SBS is completely failing. This is not the fault of the teaching staff. My daughter has the most incredible teachers who are working harder than ever. I hear directly from my dad, who is a current public school teacher, about how difficult teaching remotely is. No, this is the fault of the leadership. We now know that elementary schools with precautions in place can be very safe for students and teachers. We also know how damaging remote learning has been for many of our children and families. It is imperative that we follow the advice of the scientific and medical community and reopen schools. Forty-three other states have figured out how to send elementary students back, and yet I have heard of no set, set plan for Seattle whatsoever, for even next fall. With all the bickering between leadership, our kids have been completely forgotten. The lack of communication from the board or the district leaves me to believe that our kids will be left to fend for themselves
Please conclude your remarks.
as the rest of the world advances their education through in-person learning.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson Jones?
The final speaker on today's list is Juliana Rig Hilliard. Juliana Rig Hilliard.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, thanks for getting me on the waitlist. No surprise, I'm sure to those of you that I'm calling about student safety. I attended every one of your community meetings and asked you all the same questions, and you all responded in the affirmative that you would support an independent review unit for people having reports to make about student abuse happening in schools. And I just want to strongly encourage that process because I find it very important that at West Woodland Elementary where my, my kids are, we had a teacher there who made, parents made reports about abuse happening for 25 years, and those reports are hard to find, and that teacher remained in his position for that whole time. And so, I'd like to encourage a process which removes barriers to reporting and that allows for a neutral body to review those reports outside of HR and outside of the administration. The second thing that I'd like to encourage is, I hear a lot of talk about restorative justice, and I understand from your community meetings and learning from you that it's a priority of the district. However, am I poking around and trying to find out how to have restorative justice practices come even to West Woodland Elementary where student abuse occurred? That happens from, the principal has to ask for it, or be in conversation with the district administrators. And in my opinion, I think it's on the school district, it's their responsibility, your responsibility, to come into schools where there has been damage done, to community and to children who have witnessed abuse, and to kids who have been abused. And that, that process of having a principal liaison is broken, and that I think that you need to have a more robust system in place to put restorative justice practices where schools and students have been abused. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madeline? That concludes today's testimony list.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson Jones. So, we've now come officially to the Board Committee Report section of the agenda. We'll hear, we've already heard from Directors Rankin and Director Mack from Operations and Curriculum and Instruction. And I will now provide some brief comments about both our Audit and Finance Committee meeting and our Executive Committee meeting, and ask any of my fellow board members, or committee members to weigh in, if you'd like. So, on Monday, December 7th, we met, had our Audit and Finance Committee meeting, and discussed the annual hiring report, much of which was also was, was heard by, I believe, heard by the board, and we had, we had a couple of opportunities to delve into that pretty deeply, and that was incredibly informative and appreciated. Lots of good information provided and data provided. There's been some, some real strides made in terms of hiring goals for teachers and other staff of color, as well as some clear areas of potential opportunity where we haven't touched yet, so appreciated those. Also, our annual financial report, which we also, the board has access to, and then the rest was most of our standing agenda items, monthly budget, and discussing our work plan, wrap-up for this year, and moving into next. And we also, I believe we had some, some brief discussion about budget, but then we also had our budget work session. If you haven't heard that, I encourage you to. It's a critical time for constituents to be up to speed on what the, the things are that the board is considering in, in terms of our budget. And we have multiple work sessions coming up, and just a huge gratitude to all of our community members that have been participating in the participatory budgeting. I know that's been a very informative process for us, and we'll be excited to hear what it's been like for you as we start looking at planning for that for next year. I don't know if anybody, just briefly, give a brief moment if anybody wants to add anything that we talked about that you think is critical at the Audit and Finance Committee meeting. And then, as far as Executive Committee, most of that will be talked about today with respect to our board goals, some discussion there as follow-up to our retreat. And then, adoption of Board Policy 6225, use of electronic signature, we will talk about that. Had some, really appreciate our Executive Director Rainey Swan from the Principals Association coming to speak to us and ask some really good questions and provide us an update on what their discussions have been and the issues that they're tackling as a board. And another update from Director, I mean, I'm sorry, Chief of Communications, Carrie Campbell, on the content management system, and that's, there's some really great insights that they've gotten by going pretty deep into community and speaking directly with those that utilize our, our website, and with those that work with families that use websites, use our, our school district website. The one anecdote that I was very interested to hear about was- was when they surveyed students directly, the extent to which they were concerned about their parents being able to have easy access to the website and be able to use it well. So that was, I appreciated that update. And then a brief update on our own goals with respect to the community engagement template. And then just briefly talked about planning for working towards progress in the range of policies that have to do with the board superintendent relationship, the responsibilities and authority of the board versus the superintendent, and how, and then associated WASD model policies, working towards getting to some best practices there and some work that will be really critical as we move into our search for a new superintendent. And then we briefly talked about government relations. And unless somebody from the Executive Committee wants to add anything to that, Director Verasmith or Director Hersi, I think that pretty much sums up our first executive, our first meeting as the executive team for this year. And with that, we now move to the action items on today's agenda. So the first action item is approving Resolution Number 2020 slash, I'm sorry, yeah, slash 21-4.1, restating and conditionally amending the reopening resolution, reopening plan and remote learning model previously adopted for the 2020 to 21 school year. Before I ask for a motion for this, I just want to check in with legal counsel. Can I go ahead with a motion for this, Chief Narver?
Yes, you can.
Okay. May I have a motion for this item?
Absolutely. I move that the School Board approve Resolution Number 2020-21-4.1, restating and conditionally amending the reopening plan and remote learning model previously adopted for the 2020-2021 school year. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second. This item has been moved by Director Hersi, seconded by Director Rivera Smith. This item did not go through committee and is on the agenda for introduction and action today. I believe we will have a staff briefing, but I just want to check in again with Chief Narver. Do we want to go ahead and proceed, given some of the updates that we got from the governor? I just want to pause now and see if this isn't, if we want to go ahead and move through this presentation and the consideration of this resolution, as well as the amendment? Or are there things we need to take into consideration that have been, that come out of the governor's office today?
I know. I think the right way to proceed would be for Chief of Staff Cox to make the staff presentation. At that point, it would be in order, if you wanted to introduce the amendment, and then as part of the board's discussion, the effect of what was announced by the governor this afternoon can be discussed, and staff can answer questions about the effect that the new announcement from the governor's office would have on board consideration of this resolution.
Okay, thank you. All right. With that, then, we will start with this, the staff briefing, and then I'll ask for the amendments. So we will discuss the underlying item and any amendments at once. And then, at once, do you mean by at once, do we mean at the same, at the same time? Or do we mean one after the other? And then we will vote on the amendments, followed by a vote on the underlying item.
Sorry, Director Hampson, Greg Narver, again. Was that a question to me about?
Yeah, I think some of the language got mixed up here. So we're gonna, we're gonna discuss the, we're gonna have the presentation, and then the, then I'll present the underlying item, correct? The amendment?
Yes, next step is the-
Then we'll vote on the amendment and then the underlying item.
That is correct.
Correct, okay. Chief of Staff Sherri Cox, I believe you'll be providing the staff briefing.
Thank you, President Hampson, and good afternoon, directors. This is Sherri Cox, Chief of Staff, here to present Superintendent Juno's in-person reopening plan and bar with this amendment and the OSPI plan as well. While I'm presenting this information and the documents today, the in-person reopening of our schools is truly a cross-divisional effort. This work touches every chief's division, and they are here tonight to answer any questions that I cannot answer for you. I'm here today to share Superintendent Juno's recommendation to the School Board that pre-K through first-grade students and students receiving special education services in the moderate-to-intensive service pathways return to a five-day-per-week of in-person learning to begin on March 1st. This is approximately 9,000 students in grades pre-K through first grade and approximately 2,000 students receiving these special education services. If you're doing some quick math, this is about a fifth of our Seattle Public Schools' students. The latest research shows that schools are no longer the super-spreader sites that we once feared. In fact, today, Governor Inslee made some, made a proclamation, and he made some announcements, and I'll try to inject where he made those in our presentation tonight. In fact, our state recommends that younger students be prioritized for in-person instruction. The Department of Health states that a safe return to in-person learning includes wearing masks, physical distancing in the classroom, improved ventilation, enhanced sanitation, and grouping kids in cohorts to limit their exposure. We are already implementing some of these measures in our buildings and stand by ready to operationalize all of those requirements. We have adequate cleaning and safety supplies to move ahead, preparing our classrooms to implement Superintendent Juno's recommendation. It's important to note that this recommendation is contingent on what was previously referred to as the Department of Health's Decision Tree for provisions of in-person learning among K-12 students at public and private schools. Now it's being referred to as the Department of Health and Safety's Measures and the LNI Requirements. What was called the Decision Tree still has three levels, high, medium, and low, and the range is calculated at the county level, and COVID-19 activity is measured by the number of cases per 100,000 people over a 14-day period, along with other key health indicators, such as the percentage of positive tests and trends in cases or hospitalizations. This recommendation would only be implemented if on February 22nd, 2021, the COVID transmission levels in King County are within the moderate or low ranges on the latest version of the Department of Health's Health and Safety Measures and LNI Requirements. If transmission levels are still high on February 22nd, Superintendent Juno will determine that we may or may not return to in-person services proposed for this group of students. And previously, we were holding that she would not recommend it, but based on the governor's recommendations today, that even in the high category, the youngest learners should return to school. So why did we pick the pre-K through first grade? Staff made this determination to focus on pre-K through first-grade students, including Head Start students, based on a number of factors, including the academic and developmental needs of our youngest learners. We know that students this age learn best through inquiry and social connections. This decision was also based on current staffing and funding. We simply do not have enough money or staff available to meet the cohort requirements for additional grades at this time. And we can only lift the operations and facilities, getting those facilities ready to bring back the number of students in our elementary and K-8 schools. We see this as a phased-in, in-person reentry, as an opportunity to continue to build public trust for educators, school leaders, and families. As we quickly develop a system equipped to support one-fifth of our students, we will continuously assess and determine if we can consider an expansion into additional grades or groups of students. Why students in the moderate and intensive service pathways? Staff made this decision based on feedback from families and case managers, as well as a review of IEP goals and national trends. We know that students receiving these services have multiple goal areas and receive multiple services. We believe that in-person learning will mitigate the loss of learning and services that these students require to thrive. We will be surveying our pre-K through first-grade families and families of students in the moderate-to-intensive pathways about their intent to return to in-person or to remain in remote learning in January and again in February. These numbers will assist with staff's planning. This in-person reopening comes with an estimated cost of $18.1 million. We'll have a better estimate after we survey families and after the 2021 legislative session ends. We are hopeful that the state will change the transportation funding formula, which could offset some of these transportation costs. And while we know that $18.1 million is a lot, staff believe that not returning to in-person instruction for these students comes at a much greater cost to the social, emotional, mental, and academic health of our students. We remain steadfast in our commitment to the physical well-being of staff and students. However, we must also lift up the importance of these students' social, emotional, and mental well-being and their academic health. Our engagement teams in June, our childcare providers, who I want to just give a huge shout-out because they stepped up immediately when this crisis hit and opened their doors for students of first responders, healthcare workers, and other essential agencies. So thank you to those folks. And our equity analysis all point us in a direction to return pre-K through first-grade students and students in the moderate and intensive special education pathways to in-person instruction. Couple of things I do want to note. One thing to note is that in the resolution, it still says "on or about" February 22nd. The intent was to align the bar in the resolution language, but in an effort to get this in front of you today, I missed that. And so however, if a director would like to strike the "on or about" language, you can offer amendment to do so. And the other thing is that based on the governor's guidance today, I might also suggest that we include "high" in the return-to-school category for pre-K through first-grade students and students in the moderate and intensive special education pathways. Before you today is the bar asking for your approval of the amended reopening Resolution 2020/21-4.1 and conditionally amending the SPS 2020-21 reopening plan for OSPI. With that, I conclude my remarks, and I'm happy to take questions. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna now move to amendments. And so I'll be making Amendment Number One. I move that, this is Director Hampson, that the School Board approve Amendment One to the Board Action Report titled Approving Resolution Number 2020/21-4.1, Restating and Conditionally Amending the Reopening Resolution, Reopening Plan and Remote Learning Model Previously Adopted for the 2020 to 21 School Year, and substitute proposed Substitute Resolution Number 2020/21-4.1 is attached to this amendment. To the extent the Substitute Resolution conflicts with the information presented in the underlying Board Action Report, the Substitute Resolution shall control. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district. Is there a second for Amendment One?
Second.
Amendment One has been moved by Director Hampson and seconded by Director Hersi. As the sponsor, I'll now speak to Amendment One. Based on what I heard at the, well, first, let me just back up and state that the turnaround, as Chief Cox just spoke to, was extremely short on this. And we did not get a version of the resolution proposed by staff until it was posted on Friday. And so there has not been much time to consider, and I think that in, given that this is in fact a board resolution that we are required to provide in the instance that we are changing our in-person model, that it's incumbent that we try to reflect the directives and the expectations of the board as we move into any in-person, any additional or expanding in-person scenarios. So I did my best to try to capture what I'd heard at our retreat, at our work session, and from community input that's been pretty extensive. And many thanks to our partners at Seattle Council, PTSA, for supporting us and bringing those forward. And I believe even in some ways, looking ahead and more consistent with things we heard from the governor today, that it's a little bit more encompassing in terms of things that we put forth in August but that are still not fully in process or realized, confirming our commitment to pre-K through one and those intensive special education pathways, but also making very clear the other groups of students to which we owe a particular focus, starting as soon as possible. And in particular, if we are to provide additional in-person opportunities, which we have allowed for through outdoor and community spaces, that that be ramped up as quickly as possible. So I'm happy to take questions on that. I don't know if Director Rankin worked with me on this a little bit. It's, again, a very short timeframe. If she wants to add anything to this, I'll let her take the floor momentarily. I mean, for a moment. Director Rankin, do you want to add anything, or should I just keep going?
Um, uh, no. No, I don't need to do anything, thanks.
So then I'll go to directors for questions and discussion on Amendment One and the underlying item before we move to the vote on the amendment. So we can ask questions about both the amendment and the, the under, the underlying item. And I want to thank directors who submitted their comments directly to staff. Those revisions came back yesterday. And not seeing sufficient revisions, I wanted to make sure that we had an alternative. And then we have some other things to consider, obviously with the governor's proclamation today. Those considerations that literally dropped right before we started this meeting. And then also that we do have a backstop with the potential to meet tomorrow as well on the matter. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and go to Director DeWolff to ask questions either on the amendment or the underlying item.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Hampson. My first question is, can you just clarify the value-add to approving this amendment over the underlying?
Well, as I said, the attempt was to make sure that we were clear about what aspects of work. The original resolution states that everything in the prior resolution from August is still in effect, but there are many things that have evolved during that time. And I thought, given the kind of general lack of clarity of the ambiguity of the scenario that we're operating in, that it was, it was very imperative that the board emphasize, underline, and update anything in the amendment or in the resolution to which we still want to provide direction, and particularly as it pertains to bringing students back in person in any way, shape, or form.
So I guess my other question is, is there value to holding this conversation until tomorrow when the governor's, in your, in your, in your view, is it better to hold this until tomorrow so we can basically absorb what has just come down from-
I think that we might be able to make some improvements between now and tomorrow. And instead of reflecting on guidance from June, that we would be reflecting guidance from today. So personally, I think that there is, but I'm interested to hear how other directors feel. I think more than anything, we need to leave tomorrow with a directive to staff to begin bargaining. But as I've said to other staff and community members, that I don't in any way want to surprise our labor partners with any expectations once bargaining has started. And since we wouldn't meet until the 13th of January, anything that I feel that we need to be transparent about, this is our opportunity to do that before bargaining begins, which is what this allows with respect to the change in working conditions that would be for pre-K through one. And I think that there has- be for pre-K through one. And I think that there hasn't been enough clarity and trust about the items such as outdoor and special education and this, and then now intensive pathways that we've really truly been on the same page. So I wanted to provide as much clarity about our expectations as possible in the areas where we may have been less clear in our prior resolution and that we're starting the year that way. There is the option to simplify and pull away anything that doesn't pertain to pre-K through one and intensive pathways. That's the other choice, which is what the original staff resolution kind of goes to is just that, those simple possibilities, which are based on, you know, kind of the data that we provided and then our feedback in both work session and in our retreat about where we were. And I'm very interested to hear where all board members are at this point, all those things considered.
Okay, I think that's all my questions for now. I may have another after this round.
Okay. Do you want to ask questions of Chief Cox?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Director Harris?
Well, I would be happy to give you a motion to table this till time certain tomorrow so that we can filter and understand the good governor's newest directive. I feel very uncomfortable passing something when I haven't had a chance to read it or listen to it as yet. And I think we would do well to do that. Last thing, I want's another meeting, but I sure would like to have that underpinning and foundation. The second question, concern that I have, I thought we were already bargaining with our friends at SBA. And I guess I need that clarifying from Chief Cox. Not Chief Cox, Chief Cod, please.
Director Harris, this is, oh, Dr. Cod, you are on the line. Sorry, I thought you were not here today. Go ahead.
Yes, I am here. I am here. So we are not bargaining with SBA until we get direction from the board about what needs to be bargained. So we've already bargained the current MOU. We're operationalizing that MOU. So until something about the reopening of school phased-in process changes, there's nothing for us to bargain.
I'd respectfully disagree with you, but thank you for your answer.
Okay, so I appreciate your offer for motion. Let me just get through directors to hear from everyone and then maybe come back around to you with that in case there's other directors have questions that they would like to ask before that we consider that. So then I'll go to Director Hersi.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm in the same position, given the governor's announcements today. I think it makes sense to table this and have a more robust conversation when we've been able to unpack the implications of those announcements. So I'll hold any comments until we have more clarity around what this means for the system.
Thank you, Director Mack. Director Mack?
Yep, slow to the button. Apologies. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, I listened to the governor's proclamation and information, and I reviewed the resolution that was drafted in the bar that was sent, that was posted on Friday. Had some conversations around some of the things that left big questions in my mind about how this gets operationalized. And one of the things that's a pretty drastic change is that the metric for bringing in the youngest learners, and they defined it as K5, and through middle school, I believe. And they said that bringing back high school students was riskier and that they weren't recommending that. That their metric has changed pretty dramatically to three hundred and fifty cases per thousand, which is much higher than it was previously. And I think Ms. Cox mentioned that in her presentation. But my my biggest concern, my largest concern that has me having sleepless nights is that the governor's statement and recommendation to have all students back in person as soon as possible did not give a reality check to the fact that in order to provide social distancing in our buildings, we essentially need, depending on how you count it, twice the number of buildings. And right now, we have a hundred and four. Twice the number of buildings to operationalize this, or half the students going half the time. And those numbers may be a little off because I pulled up the data that Mr. Podesta sent to us in a memo following our retreat where we had robust conversations on this about the reality of going back to in-person in a safe manner requires social distancing, which effectively requires a reduction in class size. And a reduction in class size means two things that are massive, massive to our budget that we don't have budget for. And I feel a little frustrated that the recognition from OSPI and the governor's office wasn't provided, that we need twice the number of buildings and more teachers to reduce the class size to those cohort sizes effectively. So I am fully, fully, fully on board with the fact that what we're doing now is insufficient. It is, we have lots of students that are in crisis. The mental health of our students, we need to get them back in buildings. And we have a very physical challenge of not enough building space and certainly not enough budget to provide the number of teachers to make it work. And on top of that, since the beginning of the school year, we have lost in enrollment two thousand students, which account, which equals twenty-three million, I believe, is what Chief Berge stated. So I do think we need to figure out how we can pull a rabbit out of the hat and get more students back in our buildings. And I would like to see serving more students than the current proposal of K1 and special ed. English language learners aren't in that, in the superintendent's proposal. And, you know, there's a number of other groups of students that Director Hampson has mentioned in her proposal or in the amendment. But the brass tacks, operationalizing how quickly, when, and where, and where are we going to get the money for the additional teachers that will be required? And do we need to hire more teachers halfway through the school year? These these questions of actually how we operationalize are real. We can't just pass a resolution of something that's getting a torpedo or a budget. So I am very much in support of having additional questions answered tonight by staff about what's really possible and how can we potentially get to a place where we have a realistic plan that gets more students back in buildings. And at the present time, the resolution that was proposed, I think, is insufficient to meeting that goal and doesn't completely, it doesn't put the path forward to getting more students than the ones that are listed in buildings. And the amendment, I'm not sure whether or not it is operationalized. We need some clarity on exactly how many students we're talking about. If we're talking about, you know, the sixth graders, what does that mean for our buildings? And the numbers that Fred presented, the middle school, the enrollment is close to ten thousand students. And our capacity under physical distancing is three thousand. That's a third. So we actually have to get into the brass tacks of like, where can these students go? How do we pay for and assign teachers? And I, I, I'm concerned about putting the cart before the horse with, you know, potentially passing the amendment tonight without clarity about how we come up with the millions and millions of dollars and the building space. And we set up, you know, hybrid one day a week. You know, I don't, I don't know how we do this. And the plans we have in place in front of us are not clear enough. So I would, I would support tabling it, but I would like to have some additional conversation about how we are going to go about asking our legislators and the governor to actually fund this. And what are we going to do about the lack of building space? As well as the rest of the details and the plan actually mapped out in a way that's reasonable. Thank you.
Thanks, Director Mack. Let me here before any staff weigh in on that. Let me go to Director Rankin, and we'll see what, where we are with the tabling and and whether or not we want to listen to some, any of those answers or feedback from staff. I think probably we'll have some questions about what we need for tomorrow. So let me hear from Director Rankin, please.
Thank you. I, yeah, I would be in support of, you know, additional comments from staff right now and then having the next twenty-two hours or whatever to kind of absorb what's in front of us and the recommendation, or and the new announcements. And I think give, give, you know, community pass and SBA at least a brief window to communicate with us if they can before we actually vote. So that being said, I have one big, big piece that's, that I am wondering is, you know, we can make a lot of different assumptions based on staffing and students. And I know the models from HR that came, that they worked on over the summer for staffing numbers and such came with a certain set of assumptions of students that would choose to remain remote and staff that wouldn't be available for in-person and whatnot. But now that we're at the point where we're voting on, it's not theoretical anymore. It's, this is, this is the next thing that will happen. It seems really critical to me that we immediately survey families and not in a what do you think, how do you feel, but very specific per each school. If your student had the opportunity to be provided in-person instruction, would you, would you participate? Yes or no? And, you know, I don't know if that would need to break down a little bit in terms of saying, you know, would you if it was one afternoon a week? Would you if it was twice a week? Would you if it was every day? You know, I don't know what, what, there's scenarios we need to ask. But I think it's a little, you know, our, our underlying assumptions about numbers of students could just be totally off. And I think that as we move forward, we have to know really what students and families would participate and what wouldn't, so that we're not just either planning for a large number of students that don't come or missing some other piece. The other thing that I'm wondering about is in New York, they increased in-person services based on families that had had to answer, you know, in the fall if they would take the opportunity to come back in person, yes or no, and did not allow that to be updated. And their thinking, of course, was, oh, students for the some educational justice, students of color, we have to get them back in person. And they're now end up, ending up serving mostly white families in person. And so I would like us to be more thoughtful and deliberate about our staffing resources and just what we actually want to be providing and make sure that the students that are available, that, anyway, I think you know what I'm saying. So the, for staffing for pre-K one for all day, every day, in order to space those students out and have, you know, the smaller class sizes, the additional staffing, are any of those, is that all like IAs? Or does that include specialists like PCP or, you know, art, PE, library? And if it does, what happens to their workload or expectations for what they're currently providing for the rest of their school population while we're remote? I have that question. And then I'll just say also that the Chief Cox's introduction of this was more clear to me that I'll just, the original resolution felt very final with just these small groups of students, and which is partly why I support the amendments, to make it clear that as we can, you know, we want to provide more opportunities to students, to more groups of students. And so Chief Cox, your introduction of the item was clear that that is also the intention of the recommendation from the district. So between today and tomorrow, aligning, aligning those things and kind of making that more clear would be appreciated.
Thank you, Director Rankin. And if, staff, if you can just hold and make those notes, and then I'll give you a chance to respond to all of that, once we determine whether or not we're gonna delay the, or vote to table. Director Rivera Smith?
Hi, thanks. So, yeah, I'll start with likewise. I feel that we could gain value from holding off on our decision tonight because I honestly, I have not had a chance to read this. I went through, it came out at about 3:00 PM today, and I know how to go through some steps to get to this. At the same time, I did not get a chance to read it thoroughly. So I am not even clear what the difference is between it and the original resolution. I very briefly can tell it's got just more specifics pulled from the original August resolution regarding outdoor ed. But I can't tell yet if there's anything additionally added that wasn't in the August one. Anyways, I need to tell me right now. I would really appreciate time to read it over tonight and then cover it more tomorrow, because I'm not sure even if staff then had a chance to look at it closely. I'd be curious if they have and if they have any opinions on the operational outlook of the items in the substitute resolution. Anyways, but yeah, with governor today, that being Anyways, but yeah, with, with Governor today, that I've been really through us all for loop, I think. Um, and it was great that he did that, but at the same time, it was too close to this meeting to really absorb, um, and, and get it, get it in our heads about what, what we need to adjust here. And, um, I appreciate the new outlook to get more students in. That is something definitely I know a lot of us feel very passionately about. And we know we have a lot of families who, who students are in crisis and students are struggling. We, we need to do more. We need to act urgently, um, but we need to do it right. I don't think acting tonight urgently is the answer. I think that we need to really do, um, take time to process. My questions, and I know I have a chance to ask, um, the staff to, I think going back to, um, when Chief Cox introduced the original resolution, um, so I'm looking back through my notes, what I wanted to ask her about that. You, so it sounds like Chief Cox, you, you do acknowledge that we can bring back students in even in the high category that by the governor's orders that we understand tonight. We acknowledge that even in the high, bringing in those students, um, for the youngest learners and the, um, the pathways, that, that is, that is something we understand would be called for.
Director Hampson, would you like me to answer this question now or not?
Is that the extent of your questions, Director Rivera Smith?
Um, well then, going back to it, did staff have a chance to look at the, uh, substitute resolution? And if they have any comments on, um, the outlook for that operationally or budget or any way they did a comment on it?
Um, okay. Um, so, um, what isn't staff? Go ahead and, um, provide any brief responses to what's been, um, brought up and/or, um, let us know that you'll, um, that, that assuming that we come back tomorrow, um, that you can provide it at that time, if it's not something you have access to now.
All right. Thank you. Uh, this is Chief Cox again. Um, Director Rivera Smith, I'm going to start with you. Um, the, my, our understanding, and again, we were listening, um, at 2:30 right before this meeting is that in the, what now is considered the high range is, uh, greater than 350 per 100,000, that it still says, uh, it, it says, um, that elementary, uh, students can come back in small groups, meaning 15 or fewer students. Um, and so for us, our, our issue goes to what Director Mack was discussing is that, um, when we look at our staffing, um, the presentation that we brought to you tonight is because, is limited because we have enough, um, staff for pre-K through first grade, um, students to be in the smaller class sizes because of the way we've, um, staffed our schools. We do have enough to make that happen. We will not be using P C P staff, uh, and we will not be using librarians. Um, however, we will be using interventionists and E L L. teachers to get to that 15 to one ratio for the pre-K through one recommendation. And so, um, you know, while, while we would love to bring more students back, at this point, our capacity in our buildings and our staffing capacity is what's limiting, are the limiting factors. And of course, the dollars that would, um, allow us to buy more staffing, should we be able to hire that many? And so to Director's, Director Mack's point, um, we, we have brought to you what we can, um, with current staffing levels, uh, operationalize as far as staffing and capacity. I think that gets to your question, Lisa. And I think it goes in support of what Director Mack was, was pushing on as far as the governor's recommending, um, 15 or fewer students. And if you remember our staffing for our middle and high schools is, you know, one to 28 or one to 30 students. Um, and so we would have to be breaking those classrooms in half. Uh, Director Rankin, you asked, um, I, I had mentioned in my comments that we will be surveying our, our families in pre-K through first grade as well as our families with special education students in those pathways that I had mentioned. Um, we will, that survey will roll out first thing when we return to school in January. And, uh, with a very intentional plan, school by school on how we will reach out to those families. And it will be an intent to, um, enroll type or a remote, or an intent to enroll in person or an intent to remain in remote with a little more teeth than a just, do you think you want to come back or not? And then we would also, um, do another survey, uh, as the time gets closer to March 1st to capture that data again, to just ensure that we are, um, staffed appropriately. Transportation is ready to roll, et cetera. So I think, uh, I did not capture any other questions at this time.
Um, Chief Cox.
Oh, sorry.
Chief Cox, one question that I. Just a minute, Director Rankin.
Sorry.
Uh, next time, put your hand up. Um, that I, uh, would love, would like to get confirmation on, um, with respect to, I've heard two different numbers, uh, tonight and at other times, around the number of childcare that we have in Seattle Public Schools and, uh, the, the number of students that we have. And I've heard 2,000 and 1,000. And those two numbers make me think that we have 2,000 students in childcare in our buildings. Um, and I'd like to know, um, if possible by tomorrow, what percentage of those will need to leave because with the pre-K, with our pre-K one proposal? And, um, and then, uh, how, in, in terms of the buildings, right? That were, they, they can't share the space where they're not, they're in shared space. And then if, if we have 2,000 total and 1,000 are S P S. students, that means we have 1,000 students that are, uh, non-S P S. students in our childcare programs. And that's something that I also, um, would like to, to get confirmation on, but doesn't need to be answered right now. Uh, Director Rankin, what was your?
Uh, Director Hampson, can I just address one of those?
Yeah.
One part of that. Um, as we had mentioned, uh, in our presentation last Saturday, uh, we believe we have the physical capacity in our buildings for the pre-K through first grade students without removing the majority of the childcare, um, in our buildings. And we can try to capture what percentage or what number of those students are S P S.
I mean, I know at least two buildings that can't do it, right? So just what are the total number of buildings where they're going to have to either really min- uh, diminish, um, the space that the childcare has, um, to something, you know, tiny, 15 or, or, you know, basically such that they might have to seek new space. I, I think that it's in support of our, our partners at PAS that it's helpful for us to, to have that full information. Um, and, and the other piece of that, um, well, let me go ahead. Director Rankin, you had a follow-up question quickly.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I can get the answer now or, or tomorrow. Um, if the, uh, staffing required for pre-K through one includes, um, E L. support and interventionists, I am wondering about the students who are in grades two through five that are, um, supported by those educators, um, uh, what happens to those needs?
And then I would just add on that the, um, uh, assuming that we table this till tomorrow, because it sounds like, um, that's where we're headed, that the, uh, space constraints, my understanding is that we do have some opportunities um, in the form of empty spaces, um, such as the convention center um, and other, uh, uh, kind of public, private spaces that we could spread into. And, um, I'd like to know if, under the, the information that the governor has provided, the extent to which, uh, we might, you know, in a very much a phased way, look at taking advantage of that even under a, a high-risk situation. Um, but you don't need to respond to that right now. So that takes me back to Director Harris. Would you like, are you still interested in making your motion?
Most definitely. I move that we table or postpone this motion and its amendment until tomorrow at X. time. I don't have it handy with me right now. But I believe that we've scheduled some time for this eventuality.
Yes, that's a four o'clock, uh, Ms. Wilson Jones, correct?
That is correct.
Uh, okay.
At 4:00 P M. tomorrow. And further, that the staff alert board directors as to any considerations and or changes to the current bar and its amendment as a result of the governor's, uh, press conference today.
Is there a second for that motion? If that's, uh, our topic? Was that Director Rankin?
Yeah.
Okay, the motion to table until tomorrow at 4:00 P M. At the previously scheduled, uh, board session, special session has been made by Director Harris and seconded by Director Rankin. Uh, can I get the roll call, please, Ms. Wilson Jones?
Um, Director Hampson, this is, um, Chief Cox. I just wanted to point out that, um, Chief Burgey is noting that she will not have a fiscal analysis by tomorrow's four o'clock meeting on the resolution that you have put forward.
Uh, okay, it's, so is that to say that it shouldn't be substantively different than what was already put forward in August? Or what was put forward in this resolution?
Chief Burgey, do you want to address that?
Yeah, um, President Hampson, what I'm, what I'm worried about, and I haven't read the amendment, um, thoroughly, but there's a lot of other special populations. I don't know what it means when we say serve those students. So I just don't have a good way to, um, cost that out yet. And I'll, and I'll provide these other two comments, just generally speaking. If the legislature fixes transportation for us, which I think there's a good chance that that happens, but we won't know until March, probably. And if we get something from the feds, which we won't know before this decision needs to make, be made, um, there is a chance that we will be, you know, in a lot better position. So.
Okay, well, and just for clarity, as the person who presented that amendment, um, that the intention was to simply where we has, we had talked about certain student, student populations being priority and being served through, uh, outdoor and in-person, or outdoor and community-based in-person opportunities, that those groups would be priorities for those. I didn't make any statements beyond that, that, or at least that wasn't the intent, intent in the resolution, but rather restating that more clearly and being very specific about some, some populations that, um, it's become clear need, uh, um, greater focus. And so the, the intent was not to make it service any differently than it had, than it had been presented in August in terms of, of providing, like, if we had in fact, um, done pilots, you know, sooner, that we would have been serving, um, arguably more of those students by now. So that, that's the, where that comes from. If, if there is something different, um, then I'm happy to talk to you about that offline. Just perceive that there's something different to that, but it shouldn't, the expectation is not that it would require, anything additional than what we had talked about at the, at the beginning of the year. Okay, so can we get to the roll call, please? Uh, Director Mack, you had your hand up and put it down, so are we good with the roll call? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Wilson Jones.
I'm calling the roll on the motion to postpone, um, this action item and the amendment to tomorrow's meeting. Um, Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to action item number two, approving a grant award from the Washington State Department of Education, of Enterprise Services Cares Act Fund for Devices. May I have a motion for this item?
Yes, indeed. Give me one moment. I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to accept a grant award from the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services from the Federal Cares Act in the amount of $1,865,949 with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent and to take any necessary actions to accept this grant award. Immediate action is in the best interest of the district.
Second.
This item has been moved by Director Hersi and seconded by Director Rivera Smith. This item did not go through committee and is on the, and it is on the agenda for introduction and action today. Chief Financial Office, Jalen Burgey, I believe you will be briefing us.
Yes, thank you, President Hampson. So this grant would approve funds from the Federal Cares Act that we just found out about, um, via the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services. So it provides funding for 4,350 laptops and 103 iPads for Seattle Public Schools. These devices had to be ordered the week of December 2nd and must be received by December, um, 31st, which is part of the whole deal with the state working with the vendor. So the vendors have to guarantee that. Um, so after consulting with President Hampson, the orders were placed and this bar was brought straight to the board meeting for intro and action. I think that there's a deadline for the dollars in the state level and they waited until the last minute to push them out to school districts. But we are happy that we are getting additional devices. I would be happy to take questions. Thank you.
Okay, uh, and I know that, I just want to add, I know that you, um, were particularly careful to make sure when this offer initially was, um, seen that, that it, it wasn't necessarily going to be something that we could, that was going to be good for our students. And, um, we're able to hold out for, uh, devices that were in fact going to be, um, very functional for our students, which is critical at this time. So I appreciate that. Thank you to staff. We had to push, we had to push the state quite a bit to say the lower level devices that you're trying to give us aren't going to work. So it all worked out. Okay, so, um, we'll go for questions, starting with Director Rivera Smith.
Hi, thank you, Jalen. Um, I'm wondering, what, did ITAC help, um, help? Help in deciding what types of devices to purchase?
No, they, they, they did not. I mean, this was like our basic, we just went back to our basic specs that we've been using. So maybe, I don't know that they had in particular helped us spec, spec that, um, per se. We had to, you know, try to work with what the state was able to offer.
Got you. Thank you. Um, yeah, enough for the questions right now. Thank you.
Okay, Director Rankin?
Um, I don't have any questions. You can go to the next person. Thanks.
Oops, I'm sorry, Director Mack?
Uh, yeah, okay, so 4,000 laptops and I think you said 300 iPads?
103.
103, okay, I had that number backwards. Um, uh, my question is about, uh, what that number kind of means to the overall number of students, um, and the devices they have in hand. I mean, I, I understand that we've managed to, or at least I believe that we've gotten all students' devices. However, are these intended to help support the ones that are not working very well? And that perhaps at this point in time, we need to, uh, share out to families that if their device is not working very well, that they should return it and, um, get a new one? Is that something that will be happening with this additional, these additional numbers or are these actually backfilling for students that don't have them?
So all students have devices right now and we continue to work through, we would not want any student that doesn't have a device working well to wait, right? They're, they were to contact us right away and we make it work. So these devices will replace others that we had, um, listed. We had the, the bar, um, a previous bar that we had brought that talked about, we wanted authority to order another 5,500. What this does is it really enables us to pause that order and, and this would take its place. So we had ordered enough for everyone. We have everyone with working devices. This will just help that phase out as we work through some of the older ones or as we have, have ongoing. we have, have ongoing issues throughout this year.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Director. Okay, thanks, Director Mack. Director Hersi?
I don't have any real questions. I am just increasingly grateful to the staff for not only advocating for the devices that our students need, but also working swiftly on this to make sure that we are taking advantage of every dollar that is available to us, considering our current financial outlook. So a huge shout out to staff, big thank you, excited to get these devices in the hands of students as quickly as we can.
Okay, thank you, Director Hersi. Director Harris?
No questions, big gratitude, thank you.
Director DeWolff?
No questions here, just thanks to Chief Bergy and her team. Grateful that we could receive some additional Cares Act funding. I think just for clarity for our audience, Cares Act came out, I think in March or April, and so this is, this is kind of the pace of things, so I think just, just to set expectations for how long funding does get to us, even in a crisis, so thank you.
Thank you, and if you're having trouble with your device, take it to the, one of the tech centers. Okay, can we do a roll call, please, Ms. Wilson Jones? I, I'm sorry, I don't have any further questions, thank you. Ms. Wilson Jones?
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hersi?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you again, Chief Bergy and staff. We will now move to introduction item one, adoption of 2021 Board Goals and Objectives. I will introduce this bar today as the sponsor. I hope what you see before you in, in the bar is representative of the conversations that we had in the retreat. We were viewed again as an executive team and committee, and the only addition, other than doing my best to capture everyone's kind of additional clarification and comments about the items, I know Director Rivera Smith, you know, was, wanted to point out the communication being both intra-board, between board and staff, and then between board and community. And then there's, there are some metrics that are provided. And the other point of discussion that we had in executive committee was that we should expand, though not an official part of the, the bar or the, the goals document, that we could create a slightly more detailed set of metric specifics that will, as executive committee, that will help drive these, these goals as we move through the year and establish, you know, kind of a timeline for those. So with that, I don't know if Director Hersi or Director Rivera Smith, do you have anything to add to that conversation we had about the board goals?
No, not at this time.
Okay, so then I will go, starting with Director DeWolff, do you have questions?
No questions, just a comment. Thank you to the directors for putting this together. I, I, I do know how hard it is to kind of synthesize the, the many kind of ideas from our board, so I appreciate where we land. I, I really think this is both achievable, ambitious, and, and I'm grateful for the work on that. Thank you, directors.
Okay, Director Harris?
Good to go, thanks.
Thank you. Director Hersi, anything else upon reflection?
No, still good, thank you.
Okay, Director Mack?
Yeah, I appreciate the simplicity here, and like, like, I, it looks to me as if it captured our collective goals of working together, so thank you. No questions.
Thank you, Director Rankin?
Just thanks for putting this together, and I, there's a bit of a parallel, I think, to where we are with curriculum and focusing on some priority standards. This feels relevant and appropriate, that, you know, we have a lot of work now and coming in getting some of these basic structural pieces, I think, will just serve us really well. So thanks for the thoughtful work going into this.
Director Rivera Smith?
Yeah, no, no, not much more to add. I think simple is the key word here. We were going for something a little more manageable this year, as to start 2020 goals were quite robust, and we accomplished most of them, so we can do that, but I know this year ahead of us is going to be busy, so I appreciate the thought that you all put together here, and I'm, I'm happy with the outcome, thank you.
Thank you to everyone for this. I personally have found it to be helpful, just having gone through these goals now as a, as a board together, a full board, and then also in committee, I've found myself referring back to these goals already and speaking with constituents, and have found it a very easy reference point. And so I hope that it, it serves us well, all of us well, in that same capacity, and therefore, you know, also drives our focus towards those goals, and look forward to flushing these things out with you all over the course of the year. So with that, we will move to the next introduction item, adoption of board policy number 6225, use of electronic signature. Chief Legal Counsel Greg Narver, I believe you will be briefing us.
Yes, I will. Good afternoon, this is Chief Legal Counsel Greg Narver. I am here to introduce, along with Ms. Wilson Jones, a proposed new board policy, number 6225, which would authorize the use of electronic signatures on district documents. We're bringing this new policy forward because of a statute passed by the legislature earlier this year called the Uniform Electronic Transactions Act, which asks government agencies to, among other things, determine whether they will or won't use electronic signatures. I'll note that the district already has effectively made a determination that we will. We do have a superintendent procedure, 4070SP, which states the district will accept electronic signatures. And beyond that, like the rest of the world, as a practical matter, we've largely moved to electronic signatures throughout the pandemic, as have all the counterparties that we're dealing with. But WASDA has recommended that school districts adopt a policy formally authorizing electronic signatures, and that's what this one does. Two points I'll make before any questions. I noted this in an email to the board. The WASDA model policy is a lot longer than the one that Ms. Wilson Jones and I have drafted, and it includes a lot of provisions that go well beyond what's required in the statute. For example, they were suggesting that we specify which specific electronic signature providers were authorized to use. Ms. Wilson Jones and I didn't, didn't include those, the law doesn't require it, and we're in a world of fast-changing technology. I, I guess I thought we didn't want to have to come back and amend the policy if, if new electronic platforms are developed, but I did want you to know that there was this WASDA policy that was more extensive than what we're putting before you this evening. One last just legal point, you'll see that the proposed policy that's attached to the bar references a federal statute, the Electronic Signatures and Global and Electronic Commerce Act. That's there because while every state has its own version of a statute authorizing electronic signatures, as a matter of constitutional law, only the federal government can regulate interstate commerce. And so this is a statute that Congress passed in 2000 as a counterpart to those state laws, and it authorizes the use of electronic signatures in interstate commerce. So to the effect that the district is doing anything that could be characterized as interstate commerce, this is the statute that provides that authorization and the guidance for that, and that's why it's referenced in the statute. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, and this came before the executive committee, and we had a brief, but extensive discussion about it, and I, I think the question that I had had was about, you know, making sure that we were, didn't need to clarify the difference between this and an electronic signature on a, on an email, and it sounds like we do not have to make that distinction. And other directors had a few additional questions, but I think this will certainly make things a lot more streamlined and clear for us, and I believe we teed up some perspective, we'll be doing, trying to do our, assuming that this passes, we'll be trying to do our elect, or our annual, I forget what they're called, Ms. Wilson Jones can maybe talk my memory, we have some form we all need to fill out, conflict of interest is what I'm trying to say. And that'll be a good chance for us to, to try this out, using the electronic signature app, if you haven't already done that before. So with that, I will turn it over to questions from Director DeWolff.
No questions here, this is straightforward, thank you for your work on this, Greg and Ellie.
Director Harris?
Ooh, I love getting with the time. Terrific, thank you.
Director Hersi?
None for me, thank you.
Director Mack?
Yeah, no questions, and I would assume this probably could move into the consent agenda, if you hadn't already thought about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Rankin?
No questions from me, thanks.
And Director Rivera Smith?
Yeah, I feel like I should give a harder time about this for all our old-fashioned people out there, but, um, but I get that it is, it is necessary and important, so thank you, Greg, for all your work bringing this forward. No questions.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to introduction item number three, approval of courses with new content for the secondary course catalog. This came through Student Supports Curriculum and Instruction, December, on December 8th, for approval. Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Diane Debacker, I believe you will be briefing us.
Yes, thank you, President Hampson, this Diane Debacker, Chief Academic Officer. All of you were here last year when a similar bar came through. This bar is required by Superintendent Procedure 2026, and any new courses that we want to put in our high school catalog for the coming year have to be approved by the board. There are other courses that are revised, that will also be taken care of with the course catalog, but those revised courses do not have to come through the board. So before you today, you have details on seven courses that are recommended to be new to this, to the course catalog in the coming year, and many of these courses have come from resolutions that the board has passed in the past few months. The, I want to highlight that three of the new courses are related to the resolution from the LGBTQIA resolution. So you are going to see a course for LGBTQIA World History III, LGBTQIA Introduction to Literature and Composition, ELA 9A and 9B, and a third course for American Literature and Composition, 11A and 11B. Those courses, you might be wondering how we are developing those. We are developing those collaboratively with people within the district, and so we are working with three schools, with Nova, Leading the Way, Franklin, and Interagency. So staff from those schools and also students will be involved in helping us shape these courses. Another new course that you'll see in the bar is the Black Studies US History Course. Again, that course also is coming about because of a resolution. The resolution that was passed in June affirming Seattle Public Schools' commitment to black students included a call for a creation of a black studies course. So this is our first step in proposing the addition of Black Studies US History A and B. This course will count as an 11th grade US History requirement, and we plan to offer it second semester of this coming school year. It will be a district-wide offering, as you know, because we're in remote learning, we don't have to do this per school, we can offer it district-wide, as people can sign on to that course, that is something new for Seattle Public Schools. We will be identifying a teacher for that course. That work is coming under the supervision and the guidance of Director Manal Alonzi, our Director of Racial Equity Advancement. She will be leading that particular one. Caleb Perkins and Kathleen Vasquez will also be partnering with Manal, Manal, to make sure that the, anything on the CANI side is taken care of there. You'll also see a couple other new courses, and those courses have been initiated by teachers who want to introduce new courses, so the ones that I mentioned before were initiated by resolution. But you'll also see a course on global climate, you'll see a course on, I mean, global warming, excuse me. And so that is what you have in front of you tonight. With that, I will take any questions.
Great, thank you. Let's start at the top, I'm sorry, Director Rankin?
Thank you, as, as the, the chair for this. I don't have questions. I, I do want to note my excitement for these, these courses, and, and also note the direct, the direct impact of, of board resolutions, that, you know, the, the stated values and priorities, and that that very quickly came reflected back in new course offerings. Another thing that we talked about in committee that I wanted to point out is the potential that we have in, or, or the need that we have in the remote setting to allow students to access courses online, but the potential that we have to develop policy and practice around, you know, making unique courses available to students across the district without having to have it be offered by somebody in their building. There is a exciting potential here to give more students access to different levels of advanced courses, or courses where there's a particular expert, or, 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 and, and/or to, to also preserve more specialized courses that maybe don't have the enrollment they need at one school, but by combining them, we could save that resource. So there's, there's just some, in addition to the excitement of these great courses that will be available to our students, there's also some implications for future distance, distance or intra-building learning that doesn't involve transportation. So just wanted to point that out.
Thank you, Director. Let's go back to the top of the order, Director DeWolff?
Thank you, Director Hampson. First, Chief Debacker, thank you for your service and for being part of the SPS family. I appreciate the work that you've put in. And as far as this, this introduction item tonight, I just have to say, I kind of, my, it took my breath away. I think that particularly the work around LGBTQ courses, our Black Studies course, and even a course in anti-racism, these are exciting additions to our course catalog, and I know that our community, when we share this, and when they learn about this, will celebrate that, and I just thank Director Rankin for seeing this through and making sure the resolution was followed through on, and to my directors for voting on that resolution back in June. I have no questions, other than to say this is so impressive, and I'm so grateful to be able to vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Har- Sorry, go ahead.
Just one comment, thank you, Director DeWolff. I, I think you are correct in that this is, this is a pretty historic moment in Seattle Public Schools, as you look at these seven courses that are offering, that are being offered in terms of diversity, in terms of anti-racism. So thank you for recognizing that, and for promoting it.
Okay, Director Harris?
I echo and expand on Director DeWolff's comments. I am beyond pleased to see this, and I am continuing to hold my breath to see new courses in ethnic studies. And I certainly hope we can make up for last time, for the last three and a half years for ethnic studies and get those courses both embedded in K through 12, pre-K through 12 curricula, and offer specific high school courses, much like we've done with Black Studies. And Dr. Debacher, I still think you're the bomb. I think we're going to miss you, and I'm sorry we're going to lose you. But I've been to Kansas before. I'm going to come again. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. It's still in the same place, right in the middle of the country. You can find us, we'll be happy to welcome you.
Thank you, Director Harris. Director Hersi?
Yeah, there's not much more that I can add, other than just sheer excitement to get these offerings up and ready for our students to take advantage of. Thank you to the huge lift for senior staff and everyone else who has had hands on getting these across the finish line. So just again, big gratitude, big thank you, and excited to see this move forward.
Thank you. Director Mack?
Yeah, hi. Sorry, I have to check my mic again. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Dr. Debacher, I echo the sadness we'll be losing you. I really appreciate the work that you've done here with the district, and thank you. This bar is very, very exciting to get these courses. Couple of quick questions around first. My assumption is that each of these will count towards the requirements for ELA or history or whatever they are. And this is, these are not electives. These are courses that will count as required courses in those subject areas?
Yes, Director Mack, most of them, the LGBTQIA courses, yes, and the Black Study courses, yes. The, the global warming A and B, health topics for owners, and the anti-racism and civic engagement. I'm, I'm looking at the bar right now. I'm going to have to double check on that. I will get back to you. I believe all three of those that I just mentioned, they're all electives. So they do count for graduation requirements, but they count in the elective categories and not in the core content areas.
It seems to me as if anti-racism and civic engagement could count in the social studies area and the global warming, certainly in science and health topics as well. So I'm, I'm wondering about the decision not to have them be, you know, providing the required credits. And, and, and if you could get back to us on, on that, has it, having the other ones count as credits in those subject areas, I think is, is meaningful. Electives, you know, there's not as much space in people's schedules to take electives. And so, yeah, thank you for looking into that and then getting back to us on that. My other question is around the last bullet point just above the list of courses around suspending updating over 150 existing courses. And I looked through the bar and I couldn't find the list of those. So it sounds like we are actually eliminating 100 or suspending, and I didn't see that list. And it, am I missing something?
No, we don't typically put the suspended list in the bar. We can provide that to you. Most of those, to be honest, are in the fine arts area and areas where the courses are just out of date or, or quite frankly, weren't appropriate to be offered anymore. So we've been doing that over the past couple of years, essentially cleaning up this course catalog. It's an-
Yeah, I really appreciate the, I appreciate the work on cleaning up the course catalog because it has just, you know, over however many years that the district's been in existence, it's just, we've added courses and not subtracted. So cleaning it up, I think is great, but I think it would be helpful to see that list of what's going away since we are approving the course catalog. And that, this is a missing bit of information, and I'd appreciate seeing that when we act upon this, if that's okay. Thank you. That's all. Really appreciate the work.
Director Mack, on, we, we can provide that, that course cleanup list to you separately, maybe in a Friday email, but, but 2026 doesn't require us to bring that with this bar. So I want to make sure that we kind of keep the bar clean and just provide you with that, with the cleanup in a, in a separate communication.
So just for clarity, the policy requires that we approve new courses, but it doesn't require our approval to delete old courses?
That is correct.
That's a little, I don't know, problematic, but yeah, I'm, I'm okay with getting it sent in a Friday memo, but from a course catalog approval standpoint, it's a little odd that there's an approval on new ones, but not on deletions. So, yeah, just, just stating that and putting that into the brain of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee thought process on the, on any future policy work on that policy. Thanks, thanks very much. That's all.
Okay, Director Rankin? Oh, you already went. I'm sorry, Director Rivera Smith?
Diane, I'm so sad that you're leaving us. I guess this, this is probably your last meeting and last bar. So I'll try not to be too sad, but I'm happy for you two that you're going to go home because I know you miss it and I know that you've, you've served us so well. So thank you again. Thank you for bringing this one this far to us. It's, it's just really exciting and not just about being responsive to the board and our resolutions, but it's also responsive to educators who have brought forth these courses. And it shows just how much, how much they have to share with our students outside of their normal courses and their usual work, that they are thinking big and finding ways to expose our students to so many more experiences and knowledge. And really excited about that we have the college and high schools courses, because I didn't even know about these until recently. And I love that these are courses where students can earn college credits early, the University of Washington, and it's so awesome. Really excited about the global warming class. Because as, as many of you know, it ties into a resolution that Director DeWolff and I are bringing forth next month to operations about clean energy for SPS schools. So all these things are, again, super exciting to hear about and learn about, and thank you so much for all your work on this, Diane. Going to miss you.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith.
Okay, and that just leaves me, and I just wanted to, I only had one question, which is about, the course is called Global Warming. Are we, I've been corrected before using the term global warming versus climate change. I'm just wondering if that was discussed and what the kind of context or result of that discussion was, if there was one.
Thank, thank you, President Hampson. That was a teacher-initiated course, and that was the course title, that the teacher who submitted this, that's the title that they attached to it. So, and it, it's also UW college, college course title as well. So college, high school. So we, yeah, yeah, not at our discretion for the most part.
Okay. No, and I appreciate that there's the UW connection, and I did note that, and that gave me a little bit of comfort. I'm guessing they're probably, it's probably been around for a while and therefore represents kind of the older ways of talking about it. I don't personally have an issue using the term global warming, but I, I know that for folks that are, that are trying to kind of stay on top of the latest, the context of the latest terminology, it can be a really important thing. So I just wanted to, to pose the question. And then, yeah, I think that this is a really, when this is approved ultimately, which I know it will easily, actually, I think I'm not supposed to say that, but, but obviously has strong support. I appreciate the, how quickly some of these things, as Director Rankin said, came from, from resolution into being. And these are things that have been demanded by our community and by our students. And so I think it shows that we can in fact be responsive and that, as I said, with, with the outdoor and community-based learning, that, that you are going to have a legacy here with ushering these things through in, in the, you know, penultimate moment in your, in your tenure here. And so I hope, and, you know, I'd love to hear in, in five years, how you reflect back on that and see where your, your impact was and making, helping make these things happen in Seattle Public Schools. So appreciate your responsiveness on these things in the last months in the midst of really, really difficult times. So that's all for me.
Thank you, President Hampson, and thank you to all the board members. If I could take just a moment, a personal privilege?
Absolutely.
I just, I do want to say thank you to each and every one of you for welcoming me to, to Seattle a few years ago. I have had an absolute blast in this city and with the school district, and I consider it a privilege to have worked with each and every one of you. And you will see me again in Seattle. My husband and I are great sports fans, so we will be back to see the Seahawks and the Mariners when spectators are allowed again. And yeah, I will be keeping an eye on what's happening in Seattle Public Schools and look with it, with great pride and honor that I was here at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Debacher. Okay, we will now move to introduction item number four, approve the purchase of comprehensive insurance and support for iPads. This item did not go through committee. Chief Financial Officer, Jillian Bergy, I believe you will be briefing us.
Yes, thank you, Director, President Hampson. So this bar would approve the purchase of Apple Care Plus for iPads that we have purchased. We did not purchase Apple Care Plus at the time of, that we made those purchases, but we've now determined that this would be beneficial and cost-effective, and we don't have other options, which is what we were looking at. We've been negotiating this with Apple, who agreed to cover these devices retroactive back to the date of purchase. Apple did state they could only hold this offer open through January because their pricing structure changes during the calendar year. There, and there were no committee meetings being held in time to get this completed to meet the Apple deadline. So after consulting with President Hampson, that's why it's being brought for introduction, straight to introduction, and then we are asking for action on January 13th. Apple Care Plus offers several benefits which are outlined on page two of the bar. And with that, I would be happy to take questions.
Thank you. And yes, we did discuss this and I'm grateful that you were able to find a solution for these items in a, in a pinch. It is a great product and the extent to which we can protect our investment, I think, is absolutely critical at this particular time budgetarily and, and in general anyways. So with that, I will turn it over to Director DeWolff for questions.
No questions at this time. Thank you, Chief Bergy.
Director Harris?
Just a big thank you.
Director Hersi?
None for me at this time.
Director Mack?
Just a quick clarification on the future budgets that are being crafted for purchases of iPads in the future. Can I assume that this cost will be built into that in the future going forward? And this is just covering all the ones that we, we currently purchased?
That's correct. And, and the CARES Act that we just talked about, the 103 there are coming with Apple Care Plus as well.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Director Rankin?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Director Rivera Smith?
One question. So did, will these enable the students who use these devices to go directly to Apple for support with their device, or would they still go through our IT support?
There will be some support, especially upon when they start it up. So that's my understanding, is that there is an access support line that they can call with general knowledge and technical support. If it gets Seattle-specific like CSO or Schoology or something like that, they'll have to come to us, but it will be another helpline that they can call for general iPad support.
That's great. That's great to hear that. That would maybe alleviate the load on our, our system a little, but great, thank you. No other questions.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to introduction item number five, enhanced cleaning for COVID-19 in-person instruction at elementary and K-8 schools. This came through Ops on December 3rd for consideration. We will start with Director Mack, Chair of Operations.
Can we go ahead and start with the staff presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry. 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 Padesta, would you like to brief us?
Happily. This is Chief Operations Officer Fred Padesta. We have actually talked about this before. We are proposing that the board authorize staff to execute two kind of large-scale janitorial contracts to provide backup custodial services for practices that are really specific to operating in the COVID environment, that we have constant through-the-day cleaning of high-touch areas, that we clean restrooms a minimum of three times a day, that we have extra cleaning capacity associated with in-classroom meal service, that we do higher levels of disinfecting in areas where we provide meal sites for meal distribution, and that we have capacity on hand to disinfect parts of buildings after a confirmed COVID case. And also, this is the kind of also a last resort measure. We have staffing issues amongst our own custodial staff and need to fill gaps here and there. This is really seen as a backstop. We put a, the 2.8 million amount that we put in the bar really reflects cleaning district-wide at full-capacity buildings. And that, we could do that with either contract. We're proposing to get two, just so we have kind of strength and depth. And that there is no guaranteed amount of service required from this vendor. This is really to kind of deepen our bench, depending on as we bring students more into building what our needs truly depend, what our needs truly end up being. And if we, again, there's no guaranteed payment or guaranteed level of service, depending on what the circumstances on the ground actually end up being. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Okay, Director DeWolff?
And did you want to go to Director Mack first? Is that committee?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
You had your chance. I'm just kidding.
Long meeting.
I can't believe we're already three hours in. Okay, Director Mack?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Padesta, for that presentation. We did have a, a good discussion in committee about this item. Just for clarification around the cost, this item was not originally put into our budget. So this goes above and beyond what our original budget is for cleaning for this current school year, correct?
That's correct. And a subset of this is reflected in the bar associated with the reopening, which is, and the scale of this is much larger than might be necessary. We just wanted to make sure the contract had capacity, depending on the mix of services that we end up providing. But yeah, it is all this enhanced cleaning, whether it's through these contracts or staff, there are tasks that were not in our base budget. This is, you know, these are things that we're not planning for.
And just for clarification from Ms. Bergy, where, where are we finding these dollars from?
Straight from the fund balance. Unless we get, we, we could get CARES Act money or if the, if the feds do something. where we can qualify these expenditures, that's possible as well, but not known at this time.
Which eating into our fund balance impacts next year and the year after, et cetera. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to provide that clarification for folks. That's all I have to say at this point. No other questions? Look forward to any questions from directors.
Okay, I'm Director DeWolff?
Thanks, Director Hampson. My question is just around just curiosity maybe from Chief Podesta around the implications or the impact on our on the our union partners who are already providing similar services in our schools, what if any or any issues come up from that?
We started this discussion with the our 609 members last spring. And they, you know, understood the nature of the situation that we're in now and the uncertainty and the need to perhaps, you know, reach a peak demand in a one-time kind of non precedent setting situation. And that's why we're trying to focus the work on things that, at least now, are not part of our regular practice. Like, you know, multiple cleaning of door handles in common areas and banister railings and, you know, and this volume of bathroom cleaning, you know, if it becomes a regular practice in whatever the new normal is, that's a different situation. But but we've we've had discussions with our labor partners and they recognize and I think support keeping our buildings safe and having that capacity on tap. And again, none of this work is guaranteed if we can find ways to do it in-house.
Thank you.
Director Harris?
Question for Podesta. And in fact, we haven't been able to fill our 609 slot for several years, have we?
You know, that's gotten better. We've gotten, you know, the labor market is a bit different. The needs in other commercial spaces are different. So yes, we've historically had challenges. We've made some improvements recently. But it's that's another another certainly consideration we had for being ready to be able to tap into another resource if we needed it.
Okay, well, as long as 609 is okay with this, I'm okay with this. And as far as our new normal goes, I certainly hope that in the future, in the new normal, that our classrooms are cleaned more often than every three days. I I always wonder about our students being vectors and the flu and 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 our staff time. Non-worldwide pandemic and we have more pride than that. And I think we owe it to our staff and students that we clean more often than every three days. As has been the case for a decade, I think. In any event, if 609 is good with it, I'm good with it. Thank you.
Director Mack? I'm sorry. Here we go again. Let's go to Director Rankin.
Okay, that's fine.
Did you skip Director Hersi?
Yes, just for fun. Director Hersi, go ahead.
It's all good. No worries. No worries at all. I don't really have as many questions as much as a statement. While I support us moving forward with expanding our cleaning services, obviously in the face of the pandemic. As we discussed in committee, I'm actually thoroughly upset at the fact that we had numerous black owned businesses reach out to us in interest of supporting the district at the onset of the pandemic. But we did not do, in my opinion, a thorough enough job reaching out to businesses that are BIPOC owned with a specific focus on black businesses. Even even though, quite frankly, we know they exist and in the only the only metric that we use to identify those businesses when asked about this question in committee was WIMBY. So I'm going to have a hard time supporting this just because moving forward, we we need to do a better job. If we're going to be serious about our strategic plan and targeted universalism, we we need to be looking for every opportunity that we can to work more closely with with our black community, not only inside of our system, but outside of our system as well. So that's where I'm at. But thank you for the work that's gone into this.
And I appreciate your comments here and in committee, Director Hersi. I I think and and we'll see as as this develops, if there are other opportunities. This is a little bit of an awkward situation that we're asking for a firm with to propose a significant amount of capacity and may not get any work, given the the nature of this. But as the situation progresses and we have perhaps more targeted work where we're not asking someone to compete for something that may not lead to anything, we can probably, I agree, we can do a better job of outreach and thinking about those contracting opportunities. So thank you.
Yeah, and thanks for that feedback.
Okay, and then to Director Rankin?
Thanks. Yeah, in committee, when we talked about this, my questions were more along the lines of Director DeWolff and Director Harris about labor agreements and 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 understanding, you know, that this is really a in case to add capacity. But having had a little bit more time between the committee meeting and now, my question now is about the the what we know more now about the virus and how it's transmitted than when this RFP went out in July. It's it's pretty clear and I think unanimously accepted that it's a that this is a respiratory respiratory, transmitted by respiratory means as opposed to by surface contact. So my question is if the potential protocols that have been laid out about, you know, number of times a bathroom is cleaned or what surfaces and stuff, if there is any thought into taking another look at that based on the fact that excessive cleaning of surfaces is actually, you know, I mean, when we have like norovirus or something, like absolutely yes. But this is such a different thing that and really the consensus seems to be that hand washing is the best protection. And I'm not suggesting that, you know, we sit back and and let, you know, three times or every three days be okay. But but I also am wondering if some of the 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 frequency of some of the things that are in this right now are more than is warranted.
Yes, and we're we're looking for ways to kind of rationalize this. If you compare numbers, our enhanced cleaning costs that we've put in the bar associated with the current reopening proposal is a smaller number than this contract. And it includes some staff because, yes, when we started this process, we wanted to make sure contractually, we had the ability to tap as much as we need to. But we expect to, and there are some things that are definitely different than regular operations, like in meal, in classroom meal service, that we definitely need to think about a little bit differently. But yeah, we are not interested in doing more of this than this that is necessary. We also don't want to get caught short.
Yeah, well, and I'm thinking in terms too of, you know, we don't want to spend spend money that might be better spent elsewhere. But I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, Director Vera Smith?
Hi, thanks, Fred. Thanks for all the information here. And I do, I think it's important to focus on the fact that we do clean once every three days right now. And if we come back in person, I don't think anyone's going to feel safe with that schedule. So I appreciate that we want to look towards daily cleaning. I think that's super important. I'm wondering how much, because this is a not to exceed, which is also important to remember that I get that this is not necessarily promising that money. It is not to exceed that. But how does this work budgetarily? Like, if we do approve this and it's for, what is it, 2 million? I'm scrolling back to it, 2,800. Is that money then held and can't be used elsewhere? It's not really like budgeted for necessarily, right? We don't lock that money away that we can't still spend money where we do need it more immediately, correct?
Yes, we wouldn't encumber this money or set it aside until we understood the the true costs.
Yeah, okay. No, that's, I think this is good for us all to for our community to realize too that we're not, we are, we're committing that we might need the money for the cleaning, but it's locked away. I also, this-
Director Mack and Chief Bergy noted this. In any case, this is money we don't really have since-
Yeah.
So it's, it doesn't really open up new possibilities if we don't spend it.
Gotcha, gotcha. And but and it's also, I realized from, so I was trying to listen to the governor's announcement earlier. It was like it was right before this meeting. So but I caught something in that he said there was going to now be some health and safety protocols that are binding requirements. So I imagine we'll need to be keeping out, look out for that. I don't know if you've already, you probably didn't get a chance to look more into it yet either because you were in this meeting. But that's just my thinking that, you know, this that has also support this bar in making sure we have that money ready for whatever those extra requirements might be. But I know we'll learn more. So and this is just intro, so we still have time to to hash that around and figure out before our vote. So but yeah, I appreciate the work here and look forward to learning more about the requirements coming from the governor in relation to this bar. Thank you.
Thank you. And for my part, I would echo the wanting to make sure that we're prioritizing the cleaning and other health metrics as is appropriate for what we know now about the disease as opposed to six months ago. And and yes, of course, we were always kind of limited in the extent of our our cleaning. And if that's, you know, when we look at it, that this is a disease that operates much more like the flu. And the fluid also doesn't do good things within our communities. That that's kind of the, one of the upsides of all this is reducing some of that transmission. And so are we looking at a permanent increase in in cleaning? And then, so that's something that that we want to be looking at long term and from a budgeting perspective as we look out, you know, for not just next year, but the next couple of years as we make decisions now that affect those future years. But then also, from a procurement standpoint, to the extent that we're not able to hire internally and are going to external contractors, that we really need to be practicing our values in our procurement and that those processes are really clear and transparent and those companies have a clear pathway to be on on whatever list they need to be on so that they get wind of RFPs and RFQs is is a huge priority, I think, for for this board. So other than that, I don't have anything else. I know you're going to be with us for a minute on our we're going to go over to introduction item number five, but we'll be coming back to you on Chief Podesta. Oh, no, this is actually, sorry, now the next one's Chief Bergy, but it came through Ops. So we will now move to introduction item number six, approving a contract for RFP 072094 PRI slash DID phone circuits with Magna5 LLC came through Ops December 3rd for approval. And so Chief Bergy is briefing us on this one. Is that correct?
Correct. So this bar is for landline service for all of our buildings. Basically, this is our phone bill. It provides phone lines for classrooms and staff in all buildings and the dial tones needed for 911, which gives first responders call location. So an RFP was completed and Magna5 was selected. This contract would provide phone service for three years, expandable to five years. And with years four and five, they would be reevaluated based on performance, current market costs and technology. And that concludes my remarks, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Director DeWolff.
Nope, no questions here.
Director Harris?
Question for Bergy, please. Are you saying that right now our phone lines don't have 911 information?
No, they do. What I'm saying is it's important we keep phone lines. We can't eliminate landlines.
Okay, thank you.
Director Hersi?
No questions for me.
And then Director Rankin?
I didn't, I didn't actually know.
I forgot you again. I'm sucking at this tonight, Director.
Long meetings and it, yeah, I I don't blame you. I understand. We, a couple of years ago, refurbished all of our actual phones, the actual I'm not, and I'm not sure if this is mentioned in the bar or not, but just for board directors' knowledge that the phone system was really, really old. And this phone system we've got now has been updated. It also integrates with email and all of that. So just wanted you guys to know, it actually, I think it works pretty effectively. And I don't have any additional questions. Just appreciate staying on top of making sure that we have access to 911 and pay our phone bill. Kind of need to do that. Thank you.
Okay, Director Rankin?
No questions. Thanks.
Director Vera Smith?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, and I didn't have any additional questions. So the next set of items, we're all going to be with Chief Podesta. I know there's a couple of these towards the end that we can combine. How many of these can we present simultaneously, Chief Podesta?
I think items 10 and 11 are final acceptance and can be together.
Okay, so I'll let you, let's see, so this next item is, get back to the right page. Sorry, number seven. So this is BTA4, Approval of Capacity Management Actions for the 2021 to 22 school year. Came through Ops December 3rd for approval. Go and take it away, Chief Podesta.
Thank you. The Board Policy H13 Capacity Management requires an annual report to the board about capacity management actions that we recommend. And in this context, capacity management actions are placing portables at buildings or converting space, existing space in a building to classrooms. It is not a capacity addition like other classroom additions that you've heard for other capital projects. It's, given the conditions that we're in, it's a little bit difficult to forecast our capacity management needs for the 2122 school year. And the nature of these projects, like I said, since they're somewhat temporary actions, are summer projects. So we would propose keeping the process going so we have the authority this coming summer to take actions if any are needed. We are relying on enrollment projections for November 2019, which we understand are not necessarily reliable, but gives us a sense of a potential bottom line. We've identified two issues, one at Broadview Thompson and one at Hamilton, where one additional classroom action may be required. And then would request authority to take, to, again, authorize funds to support nine other potential classroom, temporary classroom additions as needed across the system, depending on, you know, when we have more reliable information at, after open enrollment is complete. And again, that would allow us to maintain a schedule where we could take these actions if necessary in the summer before the 2122 school year. We typically allow some flexibility on an annual basis since we never have a completely precise picture. And again, ask the board for authority for kind of a scale of overall actions we might need to take. And then we'll finalize these as the picture clarifies in the coming school year. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, I'll go to Director Mack. Okay, I'll go to uh, Director Mack.
Yes, thank you. Um, you know, based on the fact that we have approximately 2,000 fewer students across the district this year over last year, uh, it, which is a bit of anomaly and assuming it's related to uh, the COVID environment, um, utilizing last year's data to uh, work through these projections appropriately, to me makes sense. And the feedback loop that Mr. Podesta was just mentioning, I think that's also critical to acknowledge that we do have a feedback loop on this, is that um, post-open enrollment, uh, the, a, a report would come back to Ops um, as special attention kind of as an update of like what actually is likely to happen based on the analysis at that point of what um, what needs to happen after open enrollment. Um, and it's, it gets more clear, like which students are actually showing up in which buildings. Um, it's not perfect at that point either. We still have movement over the summer, but um, we, we, we will get an update of some sort um, at that time. And this is uh, just the first step of approving the ability to make those changes if they're necessary. Um, and with that, appreciate any questions that directors may have.
Okay, uh, we'll go now to Director DeWolff.
Thank you, no questions here.
Director Hersi? I mean Harris?
Thank you. No questions.
Director Hersi?
None.
I heard a none for me, so correct me if that's wrong. Director Rankin?
Um, uh, no, I think I can um, reread the materials and, and uh, you know, probably answer my question myself. Thanks.
Uh, Director Vera Smith?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, and I don't have any questions. Thanks for that additional information, Director Mack. Uh, that moves us now to the introduction item number eight, BEX 5, award contract K1395 to perform master planning services for BTA 5 capital levy planning. This came through Ops on December 3rd for approval. Uh, back to you, Chief Podesta.
Thank you. Um, as we discussed at our work session on the ninth, we are beginning um, levy planning for the BTA 5 levy. And uh, at this point, we would enter into this contract with Malum Architects for master planning to support this. And in this context, the specific tasks around master planning would be to um, based on our facilities assessment for sites that may be candidate for capital investments to understand um, geotechnical information regarding soils, conditions, environmental, you know, preliminary bio, environmental assessments. Um, and developing to some extent um, site-specific um, master plans, which are really a conceptual layout of the site and also help us determine if interim sites would be um, necessary of major construction. So as we work with the board to understand potential projects and what their potential costs might be, we need to have some high-level concepts about what the project would look like, if we would need to relocate students, which really relates to the, the layout, if, you know, we're doing a classroom additionary model or new construction. And so this contract authorizes Malum to help us um, get these uh, master planning concepts together for uh, potential candidate projects for the levy so we can give the board, you know, a better idea of um, and working with a hand-in-hand with a cost estimator, get an idea of, you know, what the potential costs might be with projects that are being considered as part of the plan. And that would conclude my remarks and I'm happy to take questions if you have any.
Thank you, over to you, Director Mack.
Yeah, thank you. I'd also add that for previous levies, this uh, process has been done um, and is, is necessary part of the kind of costing and identify, identifying potential projects, large projects. Um, and those uh, documents actually sit in the boardroom, so if you ever end up back in there, you can flip through them. Um, and just for clarification, Mr. Podesta, um, if there were projects that were master planned in the previous um, processes, uh, I'm assuming that the, they would not be duplicating that work again, that it would be fresh eyes on the ones that need it? Or just a refresh?
That will, that will certainly. There would be some assessment is, you know, is there anything about the previous master plan that needs to be updated? But no, this would focus on um, projects where we, we didn't have a current master plan.
Great, thank you. So look forward to any questions from directors.
Okay, Director DeWolff?
No questions, thank you.
Director Harris?
Uh, would these folks be working with the Master Planning Committee that is stood up now?
Um, uh, they might, uh, they would certainly probably do some process discussion explaining um, uh, what, how the process works and then as input is asked of that um, committee, the products of these efforts would certainly be um, discussed.
And also with the BEX 5 Oversight Committee?
Um, I'm, would it, you know, the BEX Oversight, yes, at the point that they comment on um, uh, I, I would think cost estimates, I'm sure they'll get a, a presentation of um, kind of where our um, proposed projects are going and we would certainly get their input as well as uh, kind of a quality assurance check on the resulting cost estimates or other considerations.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're taking advantage of some of the brilliance of the volunteer that are gifting their time and expertise to us. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Director Hersi?
Yeah, no questions from me at this time, thank you.
Director Rankin?
No questions, thanks.
Director Vera Smith?
Um, yeah, no questions, thanks. I appreciate um, the scope of the work that um, this contract takes on. I'm looking at it right now about some preliminary concepts to concept refinement, community outreach, board meeting and documentation, so um, I appreciate that um, the work's been done to, to um, vet up this contract and um, I have no other questions, thank you.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chief Podesta. I think that the only question that I have, um, obviously there's, you know, the engagement, uh, which is critical. Uh, I'm just wondering in terms of um, that, the, the contract itself, what, either protections or allowances are there for kind of major overlay shifts? Um, meaning they'll come in knowing that we're starting with a, you know, an equity-tiered analysis. But that, you know, must have come in in the middle of prior processes. Um, but so what if there's something else? Like I'm thinking of, of some, uh, some of the stuff that's coming forward uh, that Director DeWolff and uh, Director Vera Smith are bringing forward with respect to um, you know, climate change, uh, neutrality? And uh, is that, is there enough flexibility kind of built in? Or, or maybe, you know, not too much flexibility um, built in so that the process ends up being kind of railroaded or stopped altogether? What's, what's kind of, how does that filter in? And I haven't had a chance to look since I thought of the question, so it may be in here and I'm not hell-ready yet.
You know, I, the products of this work are pretty high-level and so, and certainly since staff had also been conducting, at least in that case, um, uh, sustainability work. So I think that thinking was certainly factored in. And, and that's why we're working with the board on these guiding principles that we started talking about um, at the work session, was to make sure that at the high level, those, those things are um, baked into producing these master planning documents, which again are, are kind of concepts for potential projects. They're not a design, you know, there, there's still plenty of room later. And so, um, and, you know, the, the resulting cost estimates and other, you know, project proposals that would be considered by the board will, you know, there certainly will be um, kind of a plus or minus factor as the list gets refined. So I don't believe that the master, I think the master planning process, you know, helps clarify things, but it, it's not a selection process. It's just a um, try to um, develop potential candidate projects, the thinking about them beyond um, too vague an idea, so it's hard to make decisions. But, but I, I don't think, this, this will lead to things that lock you in, lock the board in, in their decision-making or um, uh, you know, create constraints to how the projects get ultimately designed later.
Well, and President Hampson, if I could also add something that I think is confusing in the language that we use around this, uh, the word facilities master plan, um, that, and, and the, you know, the policy that we um, adopted last year is district-wide master planning? This is actually kind of focused on uh, project-specific master planning. So it's still high-level uh, planning, but it's the master planning of a specific site. More, that, that's more the focus. So it gets a little confusing when we say master planning and that, this is not actually doing the, uh, you know, comprehensive analysis over the full-on facility master plan. Staff actually helps produce that and update it. These master plans are project-specific. I, 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 I'm right in that, correct?
Yes, and, and thank you for that point of clarification. I think a really good um, concept to help understand this is that this is the level that if we know, well, this project, if it goes forward, is probably building a new building and you, uh, you know, taking into account our district-wide kind of educational specifications, thinking about, well, the, the new building would probably be this scale. This allows you to make decisions like, well, do you need to plan for an interim site? You know, would the master plan for the site say, well, you could maybe build, um, you could do construction and keep students on-site while you're building the new building? That's the level of work that comes out of this stage. It, it, it really is a, a conceptual picture of how the project might move forward. It is not a design of the project.
So it's basically, it's site-based master planning?
Yes, it's about how we're going to lay out the site, not, not a master plan for all our facilities. So that's, that's a great kind of clarification that Director Mack brought up.
Okay, and how things work in, versus how things work in relationship to each other? This is how things work in relationship to their localized environment?
Exactly.
Okay, okay, that's helpful, thank you. Um, fun stuff. Okay, we will now move to introduction item number nine, BTA 3 slash BEX 4, approval of budget transfer and award construction contract for the Lafayette Elementary School Seismic Fire Sprinkler and HVAC upgrades project, which came through Ops on December 3rd for approval. Uh, Chief Podesta?
Thank you, again, this is a construction project. There are, you know, three major pieces of work to construct seismic bracing in building corridors and classroom walls, to install a system-wide um, fire suppression system and to replace um, some uh, HVAC components and mechanical HVAC units in classrooms and um, rooftop equipment. Um, there is a budget transfer, obviously, this is a, you know, originally conceived in BEX 3 and BEX 4, so the uh, estimate then didn't quite capture the full construction costs, which are now um, a, a bit higher than were envisioned um, when a decade ago. And so we'll um, transfer some funds to allow this work to proceed and um, award the contract.
Thank you, uh, uh, Director Mack? I almost called you Director DeMack.
I'll take it, it's fine, DeMack, yeah. Um, yeah, so just also for a little bit more context too, around seismic upgrades. Um, A, it's a safety thing. And uh, additionally, there's a bit of a refresh in those spaces in the building where the seismic upgrade is made. Um, so um, uh, it, these sorts of projects are uh, smaller in cost. Um, they're not full retro fits on buildings, but they do uh, provide um, not only increased safety, but also a little bit of a refresh to the building. Um, and so just want folks to think of that as well and um, look forward to any additional questions that directors may have.
Okay, Director DeWolff?
Thanks, Director Hampson, no questions at this time.
Sorry. Okay, Director Harris?
I'm good, thank you.
Director Hersi?
I'm good as well, thank you.
Uh, Director Rankin?
Uh, I'm fine, thanks.
And Director Vera Smith?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, we are good to go. I think we are at the point where we can uh, do 10 and 11 together because they're both acceptances, is that right? Uh, Chief Podesta?
That's correct. Um, these uh, allow the board to.
Oh, sorry, let me just read them off. Um, so this is uh, introduction items, item number 10, BEX number four, final acceptance of contract P5096 with Hensel Phelps Construction for the Queen Anne Elementary School Classroom and Gymnasium Edition Project, which came through Ops on December 3rd for approval. And introduction item number 11, uh, BEX 4 slash BTA 4, uh, Resolution 2020 slash 21 dash 6, final acceptance of contract P5084 with litig construction for the Lincoln High School Modernization and Edition Project, which came through Ops on December 3rd for approval as well. Take it away, Chief Podesta.
Yes, thank you. And again, final acceptance allows us to close the contract, file it with the state and release any bonds or retainage that might, and that might be uh, that we might be holding for the contractor. Um, this is for two projects that were completed in the summer of um, 2019. One was in addition to Queen Anne Elementary School of eight classrooms, a gymnasium and administrative suite. And uh, the other, um, you all remember, was the modernization of Lincoln High School. Um, and again, both projects were completed on time and uh, where the buildings are operating well. Um, the Lincoln High School project had um, a reasonable number of changes given the age of the building and its historical status. And um, we're ready to close these contracts out and uh, continue to operate these buildings.
Uh, take it away, Director Mack.
Yay, final acceptance. I don't have any further questions or comments. Uh, look forward to anyone else's questions and comments, thank you.
Director DeWolff?
I actually, I, I take that back. Were, were there specific questions that came forward in public comments related to these final?
There was.
I just want to make sure we close a loop on those questions that came to us.
In public comment, it was pointed out that in um, some trees were removed that weren't originally planned to be removed as part of the Queen Anne Elementary School addition because the original project design assumed that the project would connect to a sanitary sewer that had, um, that existed. Um, when we got into construction, we found that the depth of, and the design of the sanitary sewer connection did not conform to the Asbeld drawings that were supplied by Seattle Public Utilities. Um, so we had to uh, design and construct a, a new connection and that did displace um, some trees that um, hadn't been in the original plan. It wasn't um, that the connection hadn't been forgotten or not thought of. It just had to be changed because of, of conditions once the excavation started.
Thank you, uh, look forward. Thank you, look forward to other directors' questions.
Director DeWolf.
No questions here.
Director Harris.
I'm good, thanks.
Director Hersi.
None for me, thank you.
Director Rankin.
No questions, thanks.
Director Vera Smith.
No questions, thank you.
And no questions for me, thank you so much, Chief Podesta. Okay, we have now come to the Board Comments section of the agenda. Before we move into general comments, I have an announcement of completed internal audits. Board Procedure 6550 BP Internal Audit requires an announcement of completed internal audits. As the Audit and Finance Committee Chair, I'm announcing that at the December 1st Quarterly Audit and Finance Committee Meeting, the Office of Internal Audit presented a follow-up internal audit report on segregation of duties related to procurement. All findings and recommendations are discussed at a public audit and finance committee meeting, and the completed reports are available online at the Office of Internal Audit's public webpage. Click on Departments and Services under the Directory tab and click on Internal Audit. And while you're there, please explore, explore other informative documents that our internal audit team has provided there for your perusal. And thank you to Andrew Medina for, and his crew for that work. And now we will go to Board Comments, starting with Director DeWolf.
Thank you, Director Hampson. I think, I just want to, at least for the first thing I want to say is, thank you to President Manuela Sly, the Seattle Council PTSA, for organizing our numerous community meetings across the city over the course of the last few weeks. I was really grateful to have over 100 folks attend my community meeting on December 3rd and, and just want to give a shout-out to the community and our partners at SCA and PASS and really the support of the board for really bringing energy to the conversation around the SBA interim assessments and was really happy to see the decision this week, the district. So just want to give big props and congrats and gratitude to not only Seattle Council PTSA and all their members, but also our community for stepping up and really telling us very explicitly and, and what they need from us and, and was really happy to see that movement came their way. So that's all I have to say. And again, just want to thank Chief DeBacker for, for her work and really excited about that, that bar coming next year, thanks.
Okay, Director Harris.
Okay, let me ping off of what Director DeWolf had to say about the SBA interim testing. I still am uncomfortable with how the city will be choosing their data points and I'm extraordinarily uncomfortable with principals making these decisions school by school. I think I've been fairly consistent about wanting a school system as opposed to a system of schools and that one's zip code should not define one's either working conditions or education. So I, I very much would like a Friday memo in clear, cogent, non-EDU speak language as to how we are handling the deal requirements for Title I school grants. I am thrilled about the course catalog addition. I am still gobsmacked and devastated that we have not been able to move ethnic studies forward. And it's my hope with the job announcement posted that we can make up for lost time and that we can do some reconciliation about the hurts of the past because those are adult issues, not student issues. I also appreciate that the rest of the directors have accepted the gracious invitation of Seattle Council PTSA to set up Zoom meetings. I will be having a Zoom meeting on January 9th at 3:00 PM. Stay tuned for my board page for the preregistration. And let me say that I have read every one of your emails. I do not have the time to respond individually and that I appreciate the anxiety and the psychological and social, emotional components of life in a pandemic. And I hope that we can get folks back to school safely. I hope that we can work with our labor partners and we don't put people's risk, lives at risk. And I hope that our governor and our Superintendent of Public Instruction do a better job of communicating with we mere board members that hold the heavy responsibility of making these decisions. With all due respect to the governor, who I like, who I campaigned for, and to the Superintendent of Public Instruction, feeling a little blindsided here and not real happy about it. Happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, soon-to-be Merry Christmas, et cetera. And stay safe, folks, and, and we are listening and honored to be in this position with such terrific colleagues. Diane DeBacker. Dr. Diane DeBacker, especially because of the Wall Street Journal craziness this last week and, and the very ugly pushback from the editor of the Wall Street Journal. You earned the title of Dr. DeBacker, but you're Dr. DeBacker the bomb to me. And congratulations to Chief Scarlett and to Mr. Bush. I look forward to working with you. I look forward to continuing to work with you, thank you.
Okay, Director Hersi.
Thank you, I don't have any comments this week. All I'll say is echoing the huge thank you to Manuela Sly, Sabrina Burr, Ed and so many others over at Seattle Council PTSA. Down in District 7, we not only had our community meeting from 5:30 to 7:00 Tuesday night, we, we then had a follow-up meeting with our legislative delegation from the 37th. Representative Harris Tally, Representative Tamiko Santos and Representative, or excuse me, Senator Saldaña gave an hour of their time and really dug into the legislative issues that we have coming down in relation to education specifically. Huge shout-out to the NAACP Youth Council members who were able to join us on that call and just to all the community folks who spent almost three hours with, with us, sitting in community and really digging into some of the issues and updates that, that are necessary for our community to feel actively engaged and informed and as if they have access. So again, just thank you to the continued leadership from that organization. Y'all are, y'all are seriously putting points on the board in terms of making sure that our families feel represented. Some exciting work coming down the pipe with not only Director Hampson, but Director DeWolf around potentially, you know, working with the NAACP Youth Council to get some representation for students in a new way. Excited to continue work around revisiting our practices around isolation and restraint with Director Rankin, but additionally also digging into our policy amendments that are, that are increasingly necessary as, as we're seeing reported by KUOW even more instances of student harm and abuse within our system. So as we, as we take this moment to head into a much-needed break, I, I do want to just say that not only for all of the educators and students in our system, but especially senior staff and so many others who often go unsung and unrepresented when folks, you know, come and give public comment around, you know, making sure that we're focusing the supports of our district on, on specific populations. I just want to say for, for all the people who might not feel as recognized in those moments, I, I see you and I, I really do value your presence and your contributions to our, to our system. Especially you, Dr. DeBacker, really, you know, happy to have worked with you, excited to see what you will do next. And incredibly excited for the new leadership that we have in Dr. Scarlett and James Bush. We are headed into a direction where, you know, this will be a season of great change, but, but with great change also comes great opportunity. And, and I think that this should really be a moment for all of us to see, or to at least ponder, how are we going to be a part of seizing this opportunity to make our system better for our children? So I'll end it at that. Wish you all a happy holiday and a much-deserved respite and looking forward to coming back in January and working, working very hard with you because we have so many things that are, that are in front of us that we need to be able to get done to make sure that our children get the educational environments that they deserve. So again, thank you for your work, enjoy your break and please take, take some time for yourself and your family because you've earned it.
Thank you, Director Mac.
Yeah, thank you, we get to the end of the meeting and I already, you know, commented on a lot of the items that were in front of us and said lots of words and lots of things, but... I think all that I have left to say, again, reiterating the thank you to staff that's departing and the welcoming of staff that are coming in. I really, really appreciate all of the community engagement, asking questions and continuing to hold us accountable in terms of making the shifts that we need to in policy and practice. And that I'd like to assure the, the community and my fellow board directors that I'm personally committed to doing the work that we need to do around student safety issues and continuing to kind of tie those policy pieces into, you know, the various places that they live in, in district policy procedure and practice. And appreciate that it's not been enough so far. We haven't done enough and we need to do more and we need to, we need to continue to stay focused. And I, I share that commitment with my fellow directors to do that work. And student safety, self-welcoming environments, and the health of our students are, it's paramount in our responsibility. And we continue to be chronically challenged by the chronic underfunding of the system. And we keep, you know, papering over and doing our best and, you know, finding where to cut. And it's, it's really damaging to our system, this chronic underfunding and this chronic situation of, of not having enough resources in the right places or having to make false choices. We do have a structural deficit going forward. And that deficit isn't going to be corrected without the legislature actually stepping up and fixing the prototypical school model and, and more appropriately funding salaries. And, you know, I have been in this advocacy from before I became a school board director and right now, in this point in time, I'm incredibly stressed about the ongoing disconnect between the state-level perception around what the paramount duty is and actually funding our districts and putting the responsibility onto school districts to implement, but not funding it. And that's, we're kind of in that situation again where we don't have the building space to easily move into bringing students back. And it's critical, we need to get students back, it is, it is causing harm. We don't have the building space and the, the budget that we're provided from the state is insufficient for the class size that we need. And those things haven't been resolved. And I know that we're going to continue advocating and hopefully be held harmless on the enrollment drop, hopefully, maybe, maybe not. But it's, it's very distressing to me, this, that, that, you know, we, we can't, we can't succeed unless we fix on a longer-term basis this structural deficit. So I, I personally have a commitment to all of you to do my very best to help sort out how we can do right by our students to get more in-person. And we have to also, we, we don't live in a magical world. We, there's realities of what the budget is and the actual physical space that we have to provide. So I look forward to having the conversation tomorrow further about how we can move forward to supporting our students. And I echo Director Hersi's comments on have a, have a great, restful break. I know our educators and our administrators and everyone in the system has been working so hard and balancing everything. And I hope that a little bit of rest and relaxation can, can bring some, a little bit of more peace. And I look forward to seeing you next time, thank you.
Thank you, Director Mac, Director Rankin.
Thanks. I just, quick review of some stuff from the, from recent weeks besides the committee meeting. I attended the Seattle Special Education PTSA General Membership Meeting at the beginning of this month and their guest speaker was Tanya May from OSPI and she is the inclusion specialist pro. I don't know exactly what her title is, but she's the go-to person on inclusion from OSPI. And so that was informative and exciting. And also a big thank you to Manuela and the Seattle Council PTSA for organizing our community meetings. I was a little bit nervous about having 100 and something people on, on the line, but we were, their registration asked, asked folks for topics they were interested in, so we were able to get a little bit organized and have some structure and, and I, I think it went pretty well. One of the big topics, of course, was the, the KUOW article about the student at View Ridge. And, and then in also hearing from Ms. Lawrence Smalls in public testimony today about her student being isolated and knowing that none of these are unique events, that it's, it's something that's running through the culture and, culture in schools and districts. And so I'm just really kind of reflecting on the, the connection that, that all of these things have. Some of it is mistrust between different parties, some of it is poor reporting, some of it is, you know, all, all poor practice, all kinds of different things. But the way, the way forward is for us all to keep making connections and talking about it in the way that we are. And so I'm just really grateful to parents who have shared their stories and community members who have come forward and the very, very important conversation around the intersection of race and disability that so many of these stories have in common. So given that, as Director Hersi mentioned, you know, we have been doing work on the restriction and isolation policy in addition to, you know, as part of the resolution in support of black students. Well, in addition to that, I guess. But so I, I guess just be on the lookout for some community engagement opportunities around that policy. We have internal work happening among staff, trying to parse out all the different, the different places that that policy might touch, from buildings to central... all the different places that that policy might touch, from buildings to central, and really make sure that we can shed light on all the places where students are impacted by this, to make sure that we get it right and do better and this stops happening. And it's, yeah. And then also working with staff on bringing forward some inclusionary practices, items which is exciting to happen in the spring. I also wanted to say a big, big thank you and farewell to Dr. Debacker. As a new board director and chairing a committee, just the support that you gave me and our collaboration was something I really appreciated. I will miss. And I'm also excited to work with Dr. Scarlett in a new capacity. Just to wrap up quickly tonight is the seventh night of Hanukkah. And Hanukkah is a festival of lights and it's also, even though it's not a, one of the high holy days or a major Jewish holiday, it's a time when I feel very connected to my ancestors and history. And it's a time to reflect on victories within the context of bigger challenge and struggle. And it just seems really appropriate for that to be right now. So I wish you all health and small, small gatherings without people outside of your household over the break and rest and think of light and find ways to celebrate small victories in the midst of all this. Thank you.
Director Vera Smith?
I'm here. Thank you all. Thank you for all the comments from my fellow board members. I am actually going to try something a little different this week because I know I typically take this time to respond directly to our public testimony speakers, which I really enjoyed being able to do. And I hear it's been appreciated at the very least by the speakers who I responded to. But I also appreciate that it takes a long time. And I left the last meeting and I was pushing 10 minutes there. So I appreciate that. I take that time and I'm not sure I'm doing justice even to the heartfelt and powerful testimonies that come forward. So I will try to respond more briefly to those so that I can also share on the other things that I should be sharing with you about is the work I've been doing as it relates to our communities and our board. So just real fast for the community, though, for the public testimony, I do want to, we're going to thank our, we had one student, Giselle Jenkins, who spoke about flash. And I, you know, flash has always been a really cool topic because kids either love it or hate it. It's our family life and sexual health program. And I'm not even sure how much longer flash will be with us, given that we're working towards implementing, I assume we're going to work towards implementing the recently affirmed state sex ed mandate. So that might change up, but as it is now, it sounds like flash is not doing our students any services as far as explaining sexual assault and that topic. And I want to make sure that we are thinking about that then. I'm glad that was brought to our attention, just to educate our students on their, you know, their rights, their bodies, and just knowledge of the topic and how they can respond to it, I think is really important. So I hope that we do look into that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We had a couple of speakers on our superintendent search, which of course is going to be a big lift this coming year. I think Superintendent Juno for her good work this last three years. And I, you know, none of us, we're looking forward to this work ahead of us, but it's something that's going to have to happen here. So I can't make promises. I'm one board member, but I'm hopeful that we will have a robust community engagement process involved with this because I know that we have a lot of stakeholders and not just the big voices. I heard one speaker say how when we've looked towards organizations to kind of be a proxy for our community's voices, that that isn't always transferred well because it's not always speaking for as many voices as we could hear from. We would go directly to community. So it's all a lot of work, but it's what we got to do. So I definitely look forward to that, to seeing what we can make of that. About reopening, we have several speakers on reopening, which of course is top of our minds and it's going to be for the next 24 hours. I'm going to be living and breathing and sleeping, reopening information here to get ready for tomorrow night's meeting. I'm glad we're going to have that opportunity. Thank you, President Hampson, for actively scheduling that for us. And we can be ready for that tomorrow. We had some speakers on student abuse, which of course has been, was a hot topic at all of our community meetings. And thank you to the speakers who came, who shared on the meetings and shared tonight about that because that is also something, again, our plate's so full, but we can't ignore the demands of our community and the just gross injustices that are going on in some places that none of us condone, none of us overlook. It's just about what do we do and what as a board can we do to mitigate and prevent and do our job to protect our students? It is our job and thank you for that. We had other speakers. We had one about athletics and getting a permit to use another school's site. Now that's really interesting to me. I do kind of want to look into that. Maybe we'll get back to you, Mr. Hardy, to see what we can find out there. Thank you, Juliana. Hello about the restart of justice. You were at every meeting. You were mine and you brought it up and it is a priority. As I said at our meeting, we've even, it's even one of our budgetary. We're doing the participatory budgeting process and it's one of the topics there. So it's being spoken about by our community in those meetings. We're doing to figure out a way that we make it available at our schools with as little barriers as possible and as strong a program as we can find. So thank you for bringing that up again. But now I'm going to move on to what I have been up to because I feel like it doesn't do me much good to do all the stuff I'm doing for our board and our school leadership without telling you what's coming of that. So I did, as everyone else, a monthly committee meeting, which I do them every month anyway, but Seattle Council PTSA offered to host these ones for all of us this month, which super grateful for. They definitely bring in a lot of voices. And also thanks to our EL and comms teams who helped get the word out about those meetings. It was kind of a tribute to hear my own name in a robo-call. I was like, whoa. But I'm glad that went out and I'm glad people found out about our meetings and were able to be there and that EL was able to provide interpretations for the invitations. Just all the teamwork that brought this together. We had so much attendance there. And I enjoyed getting to engage the community and hear about, as you've heard from other directors already, what topics their minds were and how we can, you know, better respond to those. I've also been able to catch our last two ERAC meetings, that's our Equity and Race Advisory Committee. This committee was created to address educational equity practices in our schools and in central office. And I'm so impressed with its members who have all made long-term commitments to making those recommendations and staying engaged as its work progresses over time. I enjoy sitting on those meetings and just hearing about their hopes as we do work towards policy 0040 and continue following up on 0030. In my liaison roles for the board, I attended our BEX/BTA Oversight Committee meeting where we get to hear all the nitty-gritty about our capital projects. Those are super insightful meetings, even though they happen at 8:00 AM on a Friday. Still glad I could be there, or 8:30, I guess. But anyway, I attended our Seattle School Scholarship Fund meeting and as we look towards how our application and awards process will kind of morph and change with the ongoing pandemic environment. Still a lot of work to do there. And as our board's Head Start Program Liaison, I had my monthly meeting with early learning team this week. And the brief update there is that attendance for Head Start is around 60, 70% have enrolled, but has gone up since they got all the iPads out and they're still teaching families how to use them. So they're happy with where that's going. Family service coordinators, there's one per region, have picked up toys for tots to get out to their families through the teachers because, you know, with no schools, they got to find a distribution method. And we've got students who are going 101 to homes. They're meeting in parking lots. But that's a great gift to have this time of year. I'm happy that they're able to do that. I've continued working with our committee, our committee of community members who have been, who spent the last eight to nine months shaping our 100% clean energy resolution. You guys all heard about it a couple times tonight and I know all of our board members are familiar with, that'll be coming to operations and the full board early next year. Really excited with the work being done there. And goodbye again to Diane Debacker, our wonderful chief of academics. It's been great knowing you and hope we stay in touch. Again, can't be too sad because I know you're going, you're going to go home and enjoy that time with your family. And also, you know, congratulations to Dr. Keisha Scarlett, our incoming now chief academic officer, and James Bush, incoming Equity Partnership and Engagement Chief. So happy that we have you guys on the team already to move into those roles. Again, I hope everyone has a good winter break. Also, try to get some rest. I know the work doesn't stop. We're going to be still, I don't want people to think we're all taking a huge break because I know we're so committed to this work. We're still going to be, you know, going through the work that we need to do for reentry and for all the things on our plates. But please, yeah, take some time to personal me-time and refresh yourselves. Do what you can. Stay safe, stay healthy, and I'll see you next time.
Okay, that brings us to me. That was a long set of comments. So I'm going to try to keep this as brief as possible because our tireless staff have been on this call with us since 3:30 this afternoon. So we're exactly at four hours. That's a long time. And I think we might want to check in as a board about how we can maybe get through these things more quickly and still get all the work that we need to done because this is valuable, precious staff time. And I think I will keep my comments focused on the task ahead of us. We have a lot to do between now and tomorrow. We're getting lots of emails coming in about the prospect of reopening, quote-unquote, meaning going to in-person services at any degree, whether we're talking about pre-K through one or more and in consideration of the new guidelines and checklist coming down from the state level. We've definitely been, I think, lots of folks have been anxious for some more guidance. And so I'm happy that we are getting new guidance. But I also share concerns as other directors have brought up. And but I'm confident that we can weave our way to a really solid resolution and directive for our staff to give our families some sense of hope about what's coming next so that they can go into the break, being able to get some rest, take a break, take a break from screens. And so with that, I just encourage all the directors to please dig into all that information so that we can come as prepared as possible. I'm grateful to the briefing that Director Rankin and I were able to get this morning with the combined SEA/SPS Health Team. I'm sorry, I'm not stating the name of the team exactly, but that was a really powerful group of individuals coming from both groups that have been, and then with the King County Health Director and other staff. That was incredibly informative and I think we do have to find a way to make sure that as we move into this next and future stages, that we have access to the best and the most critical information that we can get so that we can make good decisions. I believe our constituents depend on us to make good decisions. They elected us to be able to connect with others and not only represent what they want to see, but represent the ability to make those decisions with their interest in mind, but based on really good, solid information. And I know that staff are going to do what they can to get us as much information as possible tomorrow so that we can do that good work. And I just want us all to keep in mind that this is not a, there is no number. There's no case number. There's no, not even a vaccine that is going to get us back to where we all want to be. And it's a really, really tough reality for all of us, for our families, for our students, to know that. And that we're, you know, our goal is to create a plan that has as good a duration and as much clarity of purpose and direction, as much flexibility as is possible in order to move us forward in the most productive way possible. We are, this is a long haul proposition. Everything in history and everything about this disease and where we are and how it is impacting the world, that this is going to be something that we have to deal with through, for some of us, the bulk of our term on the board. And so we want to be able to kind of settle in with that and focus on the task at hand and know that it's our job to try to create some of those valves and lift some of that burden from our families and our teachers. And just one special last thank you to Valia's math teacher, who has been working with her all quarter to get caught up and managed to, she came running up, super excited that she was now caught up enough, having not turned in any lessons in the first quarter and working her tail off this quarter to be able to work on her own. And that was just the simple dedication of one math teacher. And but that was at the expense of other kids not getting help, right? And so I just want to put that out there as a recognition at how much of a difference one teacher can make in a student's sense of accomplishment and vitality in this time. But what happens knowing that when a student isn't getting that support, how it can look on that other end. And so just an acknowledgement to all of you teachers out there, working your tails off to provide those moments for our kids. And with that, as there be no further business on the agenda, I say pina ghee to you. And this meeting is now adjourned at 7:34 PM. Thank you.